According to somebody's watch, it should be about seven o'clock. Before we start, I've just got a couple of announcements. First of all, I'd like to welcome everybody to the first meeting of the North Hudson Village Board in the new facilities. Last month, this room didn't look quite that, quite as nice as it does tonight. It's amazing what just some carpet on the floor and different paint and different ceiling tiles make in a given room. There will be, obviously, an open house and additional accolades to be put on those members of the community and others who served on the building committee, because they really have done a great job of bringing this project home. About the only thing we haven't got finished yet, I think, is some of the electrical and electronic connections as far as hooking up the cable TV and stuff. So, on behalf of everybody, welcome and thank you for this. Secondly, before we get into the meeting, there are two individuals who would like to address the community as a whole, two candidates, I believe, who are running for Circuit Judge. We have three?
Ken Sordidall, I'm here.
Oh, Ken, I'm sorry. So, we have three, and we will take them in alphabetical order, if that's all right with the three. And they'll each stand up, and we'll give them a couple of minutes to introduce themselves. Thirdly, tomorrow night, there will be another special meeting of the board, and that is because on the 28th, at an intergovernmental meeting, a representative from the Joint Library requested that each of the participating municipalities who make up the Joint Library Board, which would be North Hudson, City of Hudson, Town of Hudson, and Town of St. Joe, that each of them, that this individual be allowed to make a presentation to each of those respective communities and to include it as an agenda item at their February meetings. Well, that was on the 28th. Our meeting is on the 5th. It's an item, so we already had our agenda to the paper. I will, on occasion, make exceptions and allow minor adjustments to the agenda, even after it's gone to the paper, but they're usually items of strictly an administrative nature. This one is a fairly significant one, and in addition to being a separate meeting on the topic of the library proposal, it will also be televised as well to try and maximize its potential. The indicator, they wanted like an hour to an hour and a half, so I wasn't prepared to add another hour and a half to tonight's session. I think the quality of decision-making diminishes as you get approached closer and closer to midnight, so I just didn't think it made sense to extend this meeting that long. So, there will be another special board meeting tonight, or tomorrow night, starting at six o'clock here as well. Again, the topic is the Joint Library Proposal, or at least the current state of that and what's being suggested. So, if you can be here, that's great. If you can't, I don't know if it'll be, it won't be covered live, but it certainly will be on, and I think they're asking for us to put some kind of resolution on the April ballot. Okay? So, you will have time to see it on the glow circuit or on the television. And then lastly, I did just want to point out, it's just an administrative nit, but I wanted to get it on the table before we actually get into Item 5, which is the application for the conditional use permit. There have been four public hearing sessions on this issue. Normally, all of the planned commission meetings are held in what's called "public session", and usually when those then get recommended to the board for action, it is not done in a public hearing session. Now, just because of the magnitude of this issue, when I was asked, do I want to treat this as a typical recommendation, which would be where only the board would be able to discuss it, or anyone who we ask questions of, I elected to make it a public hearing. It's a choice of do you want to be inclusive or limiting in the amount of discussion tonight, and so we elected to go with the inclusive and allow more open discussion, which can take place in a public session. So, that's why it's being held as a public session. So, with that, I will call the meeting to order, and I would ask the clerk to take the roll.
Mr. President?
Here.
Klein?
Here.
President Larson?
Yep.
O'Brien Bergman?
Here.
Thomas?
Here.
Welling?
Here.
Zappu Zapsen.
Okay. Chair would entertain a motion to review and approve the minutes from the regular board meeting of January 2nd.
On, I have a, just a, I believe, a change.
Okay.
On page four, Park Board Committee Recommendations. You'll notice that O'Brien Bergman moved that the board adopt the Village of North Hudson Outdoor Recreation Park Plan, 2008 to 2013, as submitted, seconded by Klein. We go down to the bottom of that paragraph, and I believe that when we withdraw the motion, that I would have to have seconded it, and so I'd ask that that second be changed to Klein.
Correction noted. Any other changes? Do we get a motion on that?
No, I will make a motion that we accept the minutes of the meeting from January 2nd with the correction that I had noted.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any other additions or corrections? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carried. All right. Right now, under comments from the floor, we will have the first candidate present yourself and defend thyself.
Where does that stand right now, Mr. President?
Wherever you're comfortable.
Oh.
No, I take it back in front of the camera.
Okay. My name's Howard Cameron. I'm a candidate for the Branch Four position in St. Croix County. It's a new position, just put in place by the legislature last November. Primary's February 19th, and as Mr. Klein told me today, remind everybody, it's also a presidential primary date. You make sure you vote on that, it's going to have a major say. But today, I'm just talking about myself. I've been a resident of St. Croix County since 1993. My background is, I grew up in Rice Lake, Wisconsin, graduated from the University of Wisconsin-Madison, with a short stint at University of Alaska Fairbanks. Did some farming in Michigan, came back to Wisconsin, was a high school agriculture teacher in a school in Wisconsin for six years, did a little more farming, decided to follow my dad's footsteps in being an attorney, along with three uncles and a brother. In '87, I graduated from the University of Wisconsin-Madison with a law degree, married a teacher from Hudson, Teresa Vanda, in '87. Today's or this year's, I'm 31st year teaching Hudson. Spent a few years in Osceola, came back here. I was in prior practice for a number of years, spent a year working for Barron County Child Support as an enforcement attorney, collecting money from parents or the other parent. And then I joined the Public Defender's Office in 1991, at a Spooner office, and for about four years, I actually drove from Hudson to Spooner every day. That's 85.4 miles from my house. And in 1997, I was transferred to Hudson office, and I've been assigned to St. Croix, Polk, Pierce, and Dunn Counties, were on a regular rotation. Past few years, I've been in Dunn County. Information I've passed out a little bit about me, I've been involved in, you know, the community, my church, I've done different things besides being an attorney, like a teacher, I've been a mail caller, I'm Terry P. Silzman. As a public defender, I represent people who can't afford attorney and criminal in some sort of criminal actions, such as contempt actions, a lot of juvenile work I do, varied But the thing I'd like to point out is that on the backside, I've got some ideas of having been in different counties over the past 17 years, public defender, and also where what they do in some other counties, there's some things that I think would work better if we just got a few people together to talk about it. Work with truancy issues, with municipal court judges, if we can't get their attention, let's really move up a little bit and give them some pressure. I haven't been a teacher, I'm a firm believer, kids need education. Two of most common ingredients in Wisconsin prison system, lack of education, drugs and alcohol. Other programs deal with drug and alcohol issues. I'd like to see a community coordinator, like they did in Barron County. The other one is that they're going to try to get going. I think Judge Needham said no time for a meeting now, but later on, the Justice Collaborating Council. I'm involved in that in Dunn County, where different groups get together and just try to work through different issues that may affect the system, judicial system. So, primary's February 19th. My website is electcameronjudge.com. If you have any questions, go on there. You can send an email to me, so I'm going to actually, if I'm in Richmond, I answered it. So, appreciate your support. But no matter what, I urge you, certainly urge you, to get out and vote that day. You know, if you're not sure about me or anybody else, look at the, look at our records and decide, but please, you know, honor that tradition of voting. So, Mr. President, thank you. Trustees, appreciate your time today. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
President, members of the board. My name is Mark Gerney, and I, this room is something to be very proud of. I was here two months ago, and it was in the process of construction, and we're very, very proud of this facility. I'm a lifelong resident of Hudson, but for one year, living in St. Paul and working in St. Paul when my wife and I were first married, and three years at the University of South Dakota Law School, I lived in Hudson. And I believe that my experience as a trial lawyer is, makes me the most qualified candidate for this position. I have spent my entire career, 27 and a half years, trying cases in St. Croix County and western Wisconsin. I'm admitted to practice in the state of Wisconsin and Minnesota, as well as South Dakota, and I've tried cases in both states of Wisconsin, Minnesota, as well as the federal courts in Wisconsin and Minnesota. And I bring the experience of both civil and criminal law, and that being everything from handling simple traffic cases back in 1980, when it was still a trooper with a stopwatch, and now when we're dealing with double lasers and computers analyzing speeds. And that's, that's what's now called a simple traffic case. I've also been involved in real estate matters and probate matters, as well as handling homicide cases. When I hear of individuals that have had a lot of criminal experience, I've had everything from simple burglary cases to, or theft cases, up to homicide cases. And I'm unique in that, I tried a civil prosecution of a homicide in this county, when the district attorney did not decide, or decided not to prosecute James Newman. And his family came to me, and we did that. And it wasn't a situation of doing it for the money, it was to prove that that man murdered his wife, and we did that. I've also been involved in representing municipalities, specifically the city of Hudson, when the ordinance was passed involving the, involving liquor licenses and the nude dancing ordinance, and that was sustained, and we won that matter. I also teach and am a student of the law. I teach at the University of Wisconsin Law School every other year for a week at a time, and teach the senior students who are going to be graduating at that time, within four months. We spend with four other lawyers, and he's on criminal procedure. We actually try a criminal case during the course of that. I've also lectured at the State Public Defender Conference, the Wisconsin Academy of Trial Lawyers, the State Bar of Wisconsin, as well as the Wisconsin Towns Association, specifically dealing with municipalities and how claims are handled, and dealing with claims against members of boards on matters such as civil rights actions, or what is known as a 1983 action, when someone, under the color of law, violates someone's civil rights. I believe specifically that a candidate, and then the judge, should be, as I outlined in my brochure, that should be impartial and should be experienced and qualified and decisive. And I believe I am, and I would ask for your consideration come the 19th. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. My name is Ken Sordidall, and I work up at the District Attorney's Office. I'm an assistant prosecutor there, and I appreciate this opportunity to address you all. I live in Spring Valley, and I grew up in Spring Valley. My parents were in the penile Christian school, and that's where I attended. I graduated from there back in about 1982, and then I joined the Army. I spent three years in the military, where I was a Green Beret, and I went through all that training, out in the field for days without food, maybe just a chicken or something like that. At the end of it, they drop down a stable harness and pull us out. And I could talk about that for a long time. It qualifies me to be a judge because it takes intestinal fortitude to be a judge. You have to make tough decisions, and that sort of training qualifies me to make tough decisions. You live through all that stuff, you know, where they tell you the Russians have, they've sent their fleet over to Panama, and they've started dropping nuclear bombs, and you believe it because of the situation that you're in. I got out of the Army, I went to the University of Minnesota, I got an economics degree, and then I went on to the law school there. And I graduated from the law school in 1992. I started working with Bob and Jor Gavick in Spring Valley. I worked there for about 10 years, and now I've been at the District Attorney's Office since 2004. Handle a lot of cases there. Mark talked about the Newman case, that was before my time there, but I think last year I handled about 1,300 files. Some of those are just simple speeding tickets. I've even had a speeding trial. I've also had a rape trial, a lot of different cases. Basically, the way the system works there is the judges go on intake. There's three, there's three judges right now. And so, for one month, everything that comes in goes in front of that judge for that month. And usually, I'm in front of Judge Needham, and so everything that comes in for a month, pretty much is mine, although there's some exceptions. We do have a meth prosecutor, and some of those things are changing now. But at any rate, I've been there since about 2004, and I'd be interested in your consideration, I'd be interested in your vote, and I'd also be interested in answering any questions. And even if I don't win, stop up there. I'm at the courthouse. See me sometime.
Thank you. We'll kind of characterize that as the comments from the floor section, which is Item 3 on the agenda. Are there any other comments from anyone regarding any item which is not, that we're not going to be dealing with, which is not on the agenda? Okay? Then we'll move on. I think what we'll do, in the interest of the gathered many here tonight, is we'll just move on, and we'll deal with the public hearing first, rather than deal with the other issue. So, the chair would entertain a motion to open the public hearing. From one of the other board members?
So, move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, we are in public session. Dean, did you want to address the board?
Um...
And speak to the proposal? Just, just by way of clarifying for everybody, in terms of what the board is dealing with, there has been a recommendation from the Plan Commission that reads a little bit, it's a little long, but I think it's relevant. "Felon moves that the Plan Commission recommend approval to the Village Board for the conditional use permit of Dean Hanson to construct a grocery store on Lot 105, Summer's Landing, Sixth Edition, with the following conditions and contingencies," and there are 17 of those. "Approval is subject to all items on Kevin Oyam's memo of January 10, 2008." Kevin Oyam, is, of course, the village engineer. "Kevin Oyam's memo of January 10, 2008 being satisfied, including having the traffic impact analysis completed." So, that's a part of the recommendation from the Plan Commission. "One row of nine to 10-foot trees will be planted along property lines by developer with a lifetime replacement guarantee. Building materials, colors, and textures identified today," which means the last Plan Commission meeting, "including more textile detail on facade shall shown, as shown, will be used. Lighting change to the north and east, as discussed, with foot candle levels minimized to the south and changed to light types discussed. Bollard lighting," which is a different type of lighting, "used at the entrance and on light poles on the east side, not to exceed the height of the building, while providing minimum illumination in the parking lot as required for public safety. Hundred and fourteen ninety-degree parking spaces shown currently are approved, with the possibility of angled parking to be looked at by the Village Board. Signage as submitted at the Plan Commission meeting. No outside storage of garbage or other materials, excluding items for related retail sales. Dumpster must be screened, and dumpster barrier must exceed, must exceed the height of the dumpster, and constructed material matching the material of building. Barrier gate must be of durable material other than wood. All operations shall comply with federal and state regulations, local ordinances, and fire codes. TIA study," which is a traffic study, "must be conducted with a minimum of a right turn lane on Station Lane North at the developer's cost. Sewer and water infrastructure is at the developer's cost. Approval of all permits before construction commences. Developer will work with adjacent neighbors and donate up to eight trees, being six feet tall to each neighbor, as well as plant them at the neighbor's direction. Property owners will become liable for all future maintenance of the donated trees, which are obviously on their property. Semi-truck deliveries will be made from 7:00 a.m. until noon, weekdays only. Retail hours of operation will be 6:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m., seven days a week. Two terrace, two-foot walls will be constructed on the south side of the property and will be made of modular block, seconded by Howard. Motion carried unanimously." Now, what's, just to make sure that everyone is understanding, probably appropriate to go back and look at Kevin Oyam's letter. Kevin Oyam's letter was in the, was a part of the Plan Commission materials. It was dated January 10th. Basically, and I'm going to summarize it rather than read it, I think, yeah. Cedar Corp. has reviewed the site and grading plans dated January 8th. Second paragraph says, "The project is located within the C3 general commercial district." It then lists, given any structure would be in there, what are the requirements for that. Total area speaks to the issue of parking, green space. An item of interest in regards to the traffic impact analysis, or TIA. The Wisconsin Department of Transportation has sent out a letter to the village explaining their position on the project, their position as no one has made a request to us, therefore, if the village wants to, so therefore, the village can make their decision with respect to this issue of the building itself without our input. That's what the DOT is saying, okay? If we want the village and/or the developer can make a request to have an access off 35 into it, that's the position DOT has taken. The DOT is requesting that the village require the developer to conduct a full study. Okay? So, that's where, how that part got into the Plan Commission's first conditional associated with their proposal. "The proposed retaining walls located along the southern end shall meet all of the requirements under Section 98. Exterior signs, riprap, stormwater, I don't think there's any significant issues there. With respect to planning, they recommended certain different, different types of species of trees, rather than some that had been proposed, simply because they have a longer life." It's a rather standard letter from the village engineer, but nevertheless, because it was a part of the Plan Commission motion, I just wanted to make reference to it here. So, with that, normally, in an open session, the issue at hand can be discussed, is usually presented by the person who is most affected, which is Dean Hanson. Then there can be people who want to speak in favor of it or opposed to it. We do that in an alternating manner. We recognize that a lot of this material and people's opinions have been expressed before. All of that has been a part of the Plan Commission record, all of it is a part of this record here tonight as well. So, it's not like, you know, we all need to start from scratch, because hopefully, we don't have to. But that is at least the issue that's in front of the board. Okay? So, now, Dean, as the...
All right. Start with, just two corrections on the notes from the Plan Commission. Number one, the TIA study, that night when that was brought up, the statement at the end, the developer was not part of that. And secondly, I want to thank you for that. And secondly, the, I didn't understand the statement exactly from the Plan Commission, as all grocery stores, and they have times of years where they'll display flowers and lawn things outside on sidewalks and so forth, and...
Which was acceptable.
Which was acceptable. So, I wanted to make sure that those two comments are understood. Other than that, I'm going to turn my engineer over, and he's got drawings, and he'll set them up on the board and run through all the drawings quickly, and then at the end, I'll answer questions.
Okay? All right.
I think for, I probably don't need that. I think for the most part, everybody's seen these plans.
He does need that. That's for, you do need that, so it can be recorded.
Let's bring this up here, okay? Because you've got to have a microphone.
Okay, I think everybody's pretty much seen most of these plans. I think what I'll do is I'll just kind of go through some of the changes that resulted from the last Plan Commission meeting, and one of those things...
I think it might be beneficial not to make any assumptions...
Okay.
...in terms of who has seen what, and since we are also, I think it'd be advantageous to go through them, even if you do so quickly.
Okay. What we've got is, we've got two driveways for the site. One is one way in, one is one way out. There is no actual access right out to 35, hence the DOT's comment that they don't have any say on this project, other than with the right turn lane, we would have to apply for that. But as far as approval for the grocery store itself, that lies within the village's jurisdiction.
And the reason there's been no request of the DOT?
We have had verbal discussions with them, and they basically told us our chances of getting an access out here were slim to none. So, and I think Kevin can testify to that, because he's been involved in those meetings as well.
Now, why is that? Is that based on tradition?
There, the whole idea is that if you have access, which there is access through state, excuse me, access through Station Lane, then they aren't required to provide additional access. So, if there was no, if we didn't have access out to Station Lane, then they'd have to give us an access. But at this point, because there is available Station Lane, what they want is all that access to go there. The grocery store is about 32,800 square feet. With the front access, it's going to be facing out towards 35. There's, I believe, 114, yeah, 114 parking spaces, and the way we have the light plan is those bollard lights that you mentioned in the memo would be at the entrance here, with some pole lighting along this side.
Can you describe what a bollard light is, or some of that?
A bollard light is basically a...
May I be electrician?
A bollard light is basically a pole that's about three and a half, four feet tall.
You walk past two of them on the way in, the bollard lights are right out in front of you.
Sure, right on here, you're right, yeah. And, yeah, they just have a small light that's directed, which would be directed out to the entrances here, so you could see those. And that's to cut down on light that's, that's getting off of the site. The way this parking lot is set up, it's set up so all the water's going to drain out towards the east, excuse me, with a drainage swale that's going to come down to the south and go out into the existing drainage swale on the south side, and eventually out to the pond. There is a berm up in this area that will have planteds on it, that you'll see on the landscape plan, and then there's also a berm along the side here to try and get some of that tree height up a little higher.
And I'll have some comments on that later. What about the people on the north side? There are a couple houses on that...
There is some trees along here as well and there's a few of them here.
Well, what I'm getting at is will there be any plans for providing, or you use the word in here as donated trees, for the people on the north side?
At this point, we've only got them along here.
I know. I'm looking for something that would help the people who are on the north side, lights, you know, car lights going in and out of those two...
Yeah, we'll take care of the people on the north side.
Okay.
If they need trees to help with their lighting, I am with you.
Thank you, Dean.
I'm going to just back up just one second while we're on that page and drainage. Is there a study or some type of a requirement for square footage of lot? I've been up to this lot so many times, but everything currently goes to, I guess, what would be the southeast corner, which is closest to the road and then currently goes to the west. And I see you've got that riprap. In the event of a two- or three-inch monsoon, is there studies done that make sure that this doesn't flood or create any kind of a... I believe somewhere in everything that I've read here, there was a concern about, you know, water not being able to flow properly.
Well, actually, with the way we're doing this without a pipe conveyance, you have actually a better chance of getting the water away from there quicker. And the other thing here is with this swale along here, if it would overtop that swale, it's only going to go out to the ditch out here along thirty-five. So really, it's without having pipe conveyance, it's going to make it a lot better.
I'm assuming pipe conveyance is a predetermined size pipe that it has...
A storm sewer, correct. There is no storm sewer on it. The only storm sewer is along the west side of the building and that's taking all the drainage from the roof through roof leaders down into that storm sewer and then that storm sewer will convey that down to that swale.
So that goes externally then, above ground into the swale?
No, it'll... The storm sewer will be on the ground, but the down spots will go directly into that storm sewer.
Okay, got it. Beautiful. Thank you very much.
There's how many curb cuts for the water to be handled in that area?
Correct. There's... If you look on the sheet there, you can see right here, there's four lines that go out here and they point to where the curb cuts are so that the water can get outside the parking lot.
So just to make sure I understand, the water's going to drain off the impervious services going to the east and to the south?
That's correct. And what this swale does is it provides the pretreatment necessary for...
Does any drainage calculations done on all of the... All the storm?
Which were also approved by Cedar Corp.
Where does it go after it leaves your... After it leaves that area? Does it go west?
Correct. It goes down into the swale, goes to the west, and then that actually curves and kind of goes to the south and ends up, is that the regional part?
Yeah, okay. That's... I'm just curious.
The next page actually shows the silt fence, the erosion control measures. We have an erosion control mat in the drainage swale here and in the drainage swale along here where we have to dig for the foundation. So we're digging the earth. We're going to put erosion mat in to cut back on any erosion that might occur. We provided some sections just to give you an idea of how far away the existing house is in relation to the property line and then two trees to scale. Here's the nine-foot tree that was mentioned in the plan commission approval with a six-foot tree down here with the nine-foot tree on top of the berm. And you can see here would be the top of the grocery store building.
How many feet is that?
The top of the tree is about...
How many feet from the house to the building?
Oh, it would be, well, it's fifty-four feet from the property line and twenty-five feet.
So it's looks like seventy-nine feet?
Seventy-nine feet.
Eighty feet? Okay.
There's another couple of sections on the next page. One of them is farther down to the south, again, showing the two rows of trees in proximity to the building and the property line. And then the bottom section here shows along the south, a section through where the building is, the drainage swale would be down here and then the two retaining walls that were... We originally had a four-foot retaining wall and that was split into two retaining walls here. And then the six-foot tree that's above the top retaining wall in here would be the property line.
In that shot there, that cross-section, again, getting back to this water, that would be between the building and that lowest retaining wall?
Correct.
So that's where the water will run when it gets to the...
And that won't have any adverse effects on the building or... I look at this as being level there, I'm just not knowing a lot about this.
That's the way the swale is right down at the bottom, the swale is fairly level and about six feet wide. So that's what we're looking at in here.
How far is it from the buildings on the south side to the south wall of your building? Do you know?
I didn't measure that, no. I don't know the exact distance, but those are set back, you know, I would say probably about fifty feet, maybe a little more.
I don't know how far they are either. Anybody here from...
Yeah, I know there, but I couldn't...
The next sheet is just a plan sheet showing how the building is going to lay out, giving some dimensions both on the perpendicular face to this wall as well as on the angle distances.
What is the space behind the building? How would it be used?
Just for landscaping.
So it has no functional value?
No.
And the fire department has got an egress out there so people can get out of the building. There's a sidewalk, right?
They... Yes, they requested a door being put back there, which... Back here. The door is at the end of the sidewalk, which is right here.
No, I was just looking at it from a practical perspective.
The only thing that's going to be back here will be the transformer for electric and then the gas meter.
So there won't be any vehicles back there?
No vehicles, no. The next drawing is the elevations showing the front view. This would be the north view. We have how the awnings are going to be in a top view right below that upper elevation.
Before you turn the page, how tall is village tall?
I don't want to hazard a guess on the actual height of the tower, as we call it.
Go ahead.
This is kind of reflected in this photo as well so that you can see it more in a colored version. We also have elevations on the other two sides. One of them is the south side and one would be the west side. And again, here's that door from the back. This is just an asymmetric view showing the front side from two different angles. This one's a little bit more to the north, this one's a little bit more to the south.
No, I know that you explained to the plan commission what the materials are that are on the exterior of the building. Could you just repeat what they are?
This is going to be... It might be easier to explain here. The... These awnings will be metal awnings. The building will be a site cast concrete tilt-up wall, so...
Which awnings were going to be... Did I read in there somewhere that some awnings were removed?
Yes, we had three awnings that were on the north side here.
On the north side, okay.
But when we had to shift some things around in the parking lot, this sidewalk got a little narrower and then those awnings would have hung out over the sidewalk, so we didn't want those getting hit by trucks or anything. There's not really going to be an entrance here anyway. All the entrance is going to be on the east side. So what we did is took these awnings off of here. These awnings are metal, site cast, concrete tilt-up walls. This will have like a stucco finish on it, the cream color here. And then this is more of a brick tape finish.
Are there parking... Parking spaces on that north side? Is that...
There will be some parking spaces, about a dozen of them.
Ten according to your plan.
Ten? You're correct, yeah. There's ten of them up here. A lot of that's going to be taken up by this berm area up here on the north side. At one time, we had, I think we had a dozen or fourteen of them up there, but when we did the larger landscaping berm, that took some of those parking spaces out of there.
Semi trucks go where to deliver their goods?
Semi trucks will come in on the one-way in, come here, and that's what this turnaround here is for. They'll jockey in here and back into the loading dock down here.
Where's the loading dock?
Right here.
Is symmetric, so it's...
Yeah, if you...
I think...
You can actually see them here. These are the docks themselves. This is actually the enclosure that you heard about in there where it had to be taller than the trash container.
You had mentioned the construction of the building itself, some type of concrete.
Yes.
Not being a builder or developer or anything like that. What's the structural integrity of a building like that?
It's probably about as strong of a building as you're going to put up. I mean, it's similar. I'm sure you've seen some of the precast buildings out in the industrial park. It's the same type of construction, only we're casting the panels on site, so they've become a wider panel. You're limited on precast by, you know, going down the highway, you can't be any wider than eight feet. So each panel's only eight feet wide, where we can do these twenty, twenty-five, thirty feet wide.
I think it's questions relating to how much wind the building will take.
How strong are they?
Very strong. I mean, it's... You've got all that, the mass because of the weight and all that, you know, so it's got a lot better shear strength than a typical wood or metal building. So it'll take a little bit better. Now, a lot of that is transferred into your columns, so, I mean, the structural integrity of this is very good.
That probably the only storm shelter there is.
Exactly. I mean, if there was a tornado, that'd probably be the safest place around, quite frankly.
Could it tolerate a tornado? Are you saying it could tolerate a tornado?
The shell itself will, yeah. The roof would probably be the weakest point in that, but the way the... The type of roof we're going to use is a standing seam roof that's got... All the seams are a full three-hundred-and-sixty-degree seam, so it's like on a barrel. So it basically has to tear the whole roof off to tear any part of it off. So it's, like Dean says, it's probably about as good a shelter as you're going to have in the village.
In Florida, they would consider that hurricane.
Now that we know it's so structurally solid, the pillars, the darker pillars in between the poured-on-site, are those like, I guess what they call lick and stick like brick or is that just going to be also a poured surface, just a rough finish, darker color, contrasting color?
What it'll be is it'll be a form liner on the cast concrete.
Oh, okay.
So it looks like a brick.
Got it, okay.
And then you can paint that so that, I mean, when you get done with it, it looks just like brick.
Yep, I know what you're talking about. Good.
This drawing shows the landscaping. You can see up in here where the trees are going to go on this elevated berm here. These are the two rows along the west side. There's one row at the top of the wall on the south side. And as I'd said before, we have some trees out here that we'd asked about on the north side. And then there's a few of them in that center island.
Can you tell me the height of that bermed area on the north side? It looks like on the west side, it's like...
This year, it gets up to as much as six feet above the parking lot at the very peak of it, but most of it's about three to four feet.
And on the north side there too, on the...
Along here.
Station lane side, how high is that?
That is not bermed. There's not enough...
There's no berm? There's no berm there?
No.
So you're berming, what is it, about three feet or four feet or five feet on the west side?
Three feet along here and four feet in this part down here once we get past the sidewalk.
Okay.
Are those just representations of the driveways on the north side?
These here?
Yes.
Yes.
In terms of the entrance and the egress, ingress and egress, as someone leaves that the grocery store parking lot, will my headlights hit somebody's house? I can't really see where the driveway is.
Yes, they will. Right up the driveway. I think you're missing...
Well, actually, the driveway's over here, so the inn is across from the driveway.
Is that the very first home driveway there?
Yes.
So you're only... There's two homes are represented in there.
There's actually three driveways here.
Well, actually, no, I think that's a turnaround with Dunker's house there.
This one here or this here? This one here, okay?
Yep. And then Higgins' house is the first one on the west, or first one as you come in. That's the one we're talking about, right?
I believe so, yeah.
But that's one way in. The out driveway is the one furthest piece.
Yeah, I mean, the in coming, I mean, those lights are heading in that direction, whether you have a store there or not, but it's the coming out. And where are... What will those headlights hit? What's across the street from my headlights, trees?
Is that sign? Is it lights there? I think the sign is a little bit further this way, but I think it's mostly trees right in this area.
Not big trees, though. The driveway, the house is... The driveway goes up, well...
Yeah?
The driveway goes up, well...
Did you know the transformer is out here in the corner? That driveway will be about six feet from that transformer.
This is the transformer right here.
Yeah.
It's a...
So why is that parked? So why is this...
It's on the west side.
The driveway will be six feet to the west.
So why is this still set back, set far back from thirty-five on top of our houses?
Well, because the right-of-way for thirty-five ends right here.
It's the widest setback I've ever seen on a road. It's just humongous out there.
Humongous building on a small lot. So, I mean, as far as like, it's still option that a request could be made to the DOT to have at least an entrance or an exit off thirty-five?
We could give them a written request, but they basically told us that, like I say, I mean, every discussion we've had with them has been that it's very highly unlikely that we'd... That they'd even entertain it.
But it's not only because you have access on station lane, it's also because it's too close to another driveway on thirty-five as the requirements, isn't it?
No, they want to limit how many...
Right, so there's a limit between...
Accesses there is to all highways. I mean, they just want to limit access to the highway.
So you don't know for sure, even if you didn't have access there, if you'd get access off of that?
No, they can't deny access. If there is no other access, they cannot deny access. They have to allow at least one access.
But that's why, I mean, they're pre-stating basically if they want...
In all discussions, we've had verbal discussions we've had with them so far, correct.
And is that costly to make that request or what would keep you from just going on record to do it?
We can go on record to do it.
It'd be my recommendation that we do.
Mary?
The plan commission's recommendation also?
Because he talked to me. Yeah. Get into what, some of the things I talked about later, but they ask us to do that traffic analysis study or whatever, TAF or...
TIA.
TIA. And as part of that, it would seem to me, it would be logical to make that request. And we also had some discussions with them and I was with you at that meeting here about a week ago, talking about that, all of that huge right-of-way out there and what could be done with that. And perhaps this request could also talk about use of that space as well. How could that space be better utilized? I mean, what are you going to use it for after you build a building there and you got the parking lot there and the highway goes through there? I mean, what's going to be done with that space?
Does the TIA study involve just the traffic on thirty-five or does that take into account what traffic will be created because of the stores there coming down station lane? What they want to do with that TIA is more than just the store here. They want to look at basically the entire village. at basically the entire village. And how it's affected the... What's that? TAI, the TAI is, or the TIA, excuse me, is not done yet? That's correct. What did the fire department say about fire safety? You only have one access to the...
Yeah, yeah, the fire department, the question being and I asked.
Yeah, and, and they've talked about two different places of fire avoidance, but, um, when Starwoods went to build their development, it was the fire department that pretty much said, you gotta put up an access road to get two accesses to this property on two different angles, um, for fire safety, so they can't get in from the east, they can get in from the south to get into that part.
The fire department has approved this plan, that's the simple...
To come back to the issue of the village or the, um, uh, request for access off thirty-five, as I understand it, the village and the developer could do that jointly.
Yes.
Is there anyone who has information that says to, to the contrary to that? Bill, was there any? Would I, would I be correct in assuming that a request for an access here that was jointly submitted might have some credence, although it obviously is an uphill slope? Might have a better chance?
It's, basically, it's a statewide issue right now with DOT access points. And it's, it's happening all over the state where they're continually to back off on accesses. And they have, it's like a policy. And you heard the conversation, they had conversations, and they said, making the request though, they have to respond to the request, one way or the other.
Bill, when did this policy begin? Because it seems like a deviation from what we've seen in the past.
It's only, um, in about the last four or five years, they've gotten very aggressive on granting access to anybody if they don't have to. It started when they, when they started to do these bypasses around the state, and then they decided that, like, the one around Waukesha down in the southeast part, they let in too many accesses, so they defeated part of the bypass. They have been very aggressive on it. And I've run across the issue in other jurisdictions. The same, same type of issue, DOT will not usually bend, but the request can be made.
As far as like, one you'd mentioned earlier, if there is any access, um, I'm sure different forms of access vary widely, and we're talking a very narrow, small street. And I, I guess, just, just from your setup, you know, for the word here, and I, I guess, when a request is made, can there be an argument made as far as like, suitability of that, of that small side of the street, you know, and then just...
I would hope so, I would, I would hope so that we could put all of the positive spin on that for adding another access, whether in fact they would approve it or not. What, essentially what they told us was that, uh, oh, I could read it here, this meeting took place on January seventeenth, but he said that the policy of the DOT is that if a property has access to an abutting local road, that access will come off that road and not the state highway, regardless of whether it is a commercial site or residential site or whatever. They were adamant about that at the meeting, but we did, even at that time, we talked to them about saying, well, what if we appealed? What if we did formally ask? And I think they, they basically admitted that we could do that. My point is, is the DOT essentially says even that property out there that we were talking about, that easement, that big wide strip of land, is their property, it's the DOT's. My position is the DOT has jurisdiction, the property belongs to the people, the people is us. We should be able to have some sort of argument that says what is best for the village and best for the community, best for the developer and best for the people that live along there is, whatever that is. And hopefully it's a persuasive argument. And, uh, if we do it a persuasive argument, you know, they, they can swing their weight around, but at least we can, we can talk to them about it, and we should, and we may even appeal it. But I think it makes sense for us to, uh, go forward with that, with that argument with them at the same time as we complete that TIA. That's my take on it.
Is there an appeal process that we, as a village, can go through if the Department of Transportation were just saying no?
My guess is that's...
Yeah, there's administrative appeals. Chapter two twenty-seven.
It probably is a, is an independent action other than, obviously, if you work off the assumption that, that the, if the request is approved, the board could always take a separate action which says, you know, we're going to do that request.
I'm gonna come back to my question again on TIA, I just, my own information. TIA, is that an analysis of what the current traffic is, or do they take into account what new traffic requirements will be when it's a facility that...
It's basically new traffic requirements. They wanna know what, what the issues are if you build a structure or that, that kinda commercial development takes place, what it does to the traffic along thirty-five and the, and the adjoining streets.
I think it's not only critical, it just seems to me from this common sense perspective, it says, is traffic pattern gonna change in this section of town? Uh, duh, I think the answer is yes. Would it then seem logical that maybe an access, from another point other than the singular one that's been proposed, might make a little sense, especially if you put a little bypass on the right side? I mean, I, I don't know how, you know, why that wouldn't make sense.
The question is, why wasn't this all considered as part of the property? All the, all these questions are, are ridiculous.
They're the same issues that were brought up.
That, that were not even discussed, it was, oh, we'll figure this out later, we'll figure this out later. So now we don't have an access off thirty-five, which I absolutely think is huge for this project, huge. You've got that small, that small street, so we're gonna have to redo that, somebody's gonna have to pay for that. That's gonna take out yard space of the neighbors there, there's gonna be more traffic. I, I just can't believe, none of this was figured out before we even rezoned that piece of property.
If I could make a statement, there's been some traffic counts done. Highway thirty-five has got nine thousand cars a day going on, about four thousand five in the morning, four thousand five in the afternoon. Station Lane, they did a traffic count, did you hear any people? Three hundred cars in the morning, three hundred cars in the afternoon. Grantley Lane, fifteen hundred, okay, across the street, fifteen hundred. Grocery store to do gross sales of seven million dollars requires that I get four hundred and fifty cars in there a day. So I'm not even gonna bring that street up to level of Grantley Lane.
I, I just had a question, I mean, I read, I read through all the data last night that was submitted with respect to the traffic on Station Lane. What was the number you just said was?
We actually, I guess, this was discussed a couple months ago, that also the price initial people wanted to have a feel for what the... This was, like, two months ago, there were some discussions in the plan commission, um, agenda meetings, and, uh, at that time, there was some just, I guess, consensus that they wanted us to go out and put some traffic counters in the pavement sections out there just to kinda get a feel for, you know, what lines are going past that particular point. And...
I'm assuming when you're talking about Station Lane, I mean, Station Lane obviously is a, you know, mile, mile and a half long, whatever. Are you talking about the counters being only right there, right off of thirty-five on that straight stretch?
Yes.
Okay.
So we put, we put two of them in, um, one of them ended up not working, but typically it's like a fifty-fifty split is what we usually see. And at, at the, at that particular time, we did it on a forty, um, trial basis, uh, Thursday through Sunday, and we had three hundred and thirty-one vehicles passing that point in the average daily trip. Three hundred and thirty-one average dollar in that time, particularly for, for the period. So...
But if you need an extra four hundred and fifty, and I think that one of them actually sits six hundred, and if we get to six hundred...
Again, that's an average, we're talking about the day, we're thinking that maybe Saturday you may have six hundred.
But that's in addition to, I mean, I, I just don't want it seeing...
Yes, but now you're talking nine hundred cars, that's two hundred percent. You're talking nine hundred cars on that street against Grantley Lane of fifteen hundred.
But we're not, we're not, you know, I mean, don't, don't compare it to something...
All right, I'm gonna just suggest that the engineer continue with your presentation until you get through.
We're, we're nearly at the end here anyway, there's only a couple more sheets left. The next sheet was actually the, uh, the lighting sheet, and we have bollard lights at the entrance here, which we discussed before, and then pole lights here and here. And there's a detail of those on that, that far side there. A couple of things that were asked for, uh, after the plan commission meeting, prior to this meeting, one was the sign plan, so I put together a plan that just shows the dimensions of what the signs are, and I kept them all the same in each space, except for this one I had a little larger. But the reason I had them all, all the same size in all of these is we don't know, whoever the grocery store that comes in, we don't know which, which sign they're gonna want to wear, so we made them all the same size, so it could be interchangeable. And then this one is a little larger, 'cause it is the, it made it, uh, and those were twenty-six inches by twenty-one feet, and this one is, uh, thirty inches by twenty-seven feet.
Okay, I think somebody has a question.
Yeah, the, the physical structure of that building, building, um, gives the appearance of it being subdivided, is that accurate?
No. The only, probably the only place it's gonna be divided, I don't think I have another.
Are you talking about inside the building too?
Inside, outside.
The only thing that would probably be divided on the inside is...
One hundred and thousand square foot building have six, five thousand square foot boxes.
Well, the, the division that you probably will have is down along the south side, because that's...
Yeah, you'd have, you'd have subdivisions, just like a grocery store, you have a meat department inside, you have a bakery inside, you have a warehouse inside, you have a freight room inside, uh, you know, look, you end up, you have bathrooms inside, those become cubicles, you know, just like this building.
So it's a single-use building, structural building, is my question.
Correct. I mean, for the most part, this is gonna be open space on the inside.
Quick question on that, is there lighting on the back of the building at all?
The only light that'll probably be back there is, there's gotta be an egress light for that door. So there'll probably be a, a wall pack back there with cutoff on it, so it just shines down onto the, uh, the concrete sidewalk outside of the door.
Do you want me to have a question?
Can I say something that's been, that's been mentioned, that's been kinda kept low key, I think it was really important, if we don't get access to thirty-five? There was something mentioned that the planning commission said, the angled parking, the angled parking does one main thing. It keeps people going in the one and going out the other. If you have an in and an out and you have straight parking, everybody's just gonna back out and go for the nearest. So the angle parking needs to be considered as far as keeping things the one way.
It wasn't in, I don't believe it was in their stipulations, it was...
It is.
It would be in the minutes?
It is, but, no, it's actually in here, as, as item number six is one of the conditions.
Item six.
Uh, a hundred and four...
And it's to be considered, I think is what it said?
No, it's, well, what, what I'm reading...
By the board.
Pardon?
We're, to be looked at by the board.
To be looked at, correct. Dean and I talked about it a little bit, and that would cut back considerably in the number of parking spaces, so it's one of the reasons why we didn't, didn't approach that.
Somebody had asked a question before, we'll, we'll just have one person talk at a time. Someone had asked the question, you know, is it just a part of the minutes, which is a fair question, or is it actually a part of the conditions that the plan commission attached to their approval? And the answer is, it's one of the conditions attached to the plan commission recommendation. And it reads, a hundred and fourteen ninety-degree parking spaces shown currently are approved with the possibility of angled parking to... This one is different than this one.
This is the one that Donna gave me to send forward.
No, it is, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm reading it the same. Uh, are approved with the possibility of angled parking to be looked at by the village board, so I stand corrected, all right? The angled parking is not a condition. Uh, so this condition may be revised to approve angled parking with a reduction in the parking stalls based on the village board's decision regarding angled parking, all right? So we, we can also take a plan commission recommendation, we can add to it, subtract to it, okay? So I think the point's been making, has been made, that angled parking is beneficial for, in this particular usage. Yes. Yes.
Aaron, can I ask? And I had a note on this very thing, and I wanna note, Dean, if we go angled parking, how many fewer spaces are there in this lot?
My guess is five.
Oh, so we're still talking about a hundred and ten parking spaces? And I'm saying about, I, I know folks, I can do the arithmetic, but a hundred's nice and easy to look at, and I don't think that that five, four or five is gonna make a significant impact.
Is that what you think, just four or five?
It's probably gonna be an even number, so it's gonna be probably, I mean...
Okay, six.
The only reason I'm saying that is because you're gonna, you're gonna take out, whatever you take out, you're gonna take out in pairs on here. And I don't know exactly what that is, but...
It'll be a hundred plus.
It, it could actually be a little more than that, I think. Just because when you start to, to angle it, you do really cut back on the amount of space you get.
Well, that depends on what degree we do it, fifteen or thirty.
That's true, too.
Yeah.
Okay, go ahead, continue. Unless there are any more questions on this chart.
Would, uh, any reduction require, uh, variance that would re...
No.
Okay, so we're, thank you.
There was a question here before we move on.
There was one drawing that showed the, I think it was the angle, I forget what you called it, but you could see the side and the front, and it showed the enclosure around the dumpsters. I thought the recommendation by the planning commission said it would be the same materials of the building, to me, that looks like a slap fence.
It's actually, the way we had it drawn, and I think the way it's shown on here as well, uh, yeah, it's showing it as would, but that was one of the things that came out. We didn't make that change on here yet because we wanted to wait until the list was fully activated, final changes.
Typically, you have to have some sort of fence door. That can't be concrete, but the sidewall certainly can be.
The, uh, condition, as, as stated by the, uh, plan commission was, the dumpster must be screened, and the dumpster barrier must exceed the height of the dumpsters itself. Constructed in material matching the material of the building. The barrier gate must be of durable material other than wood.
Durable material include chain link coming, you wouldn't want a chain link.
We don't want a chain link anyway, we want it to screen it, so. I mean, this is the view you're gonna have from, from Highway thirty-five, I mean, you aren't gonna want something that's gonna look like garbage out there, it's not gonna, that wouldn't lend to sales very well.
On a practical note, is that area large enough to support the amount of refuge from a grocery store?
The, uh, the space is, uh, ten by twenty feet.
That one that's shown there?
Right, and then your cardboard is inside, all you're talking about out there is the dumpster. Your cardboard's packaged inside and shipped by truck.
And then the last item that was asked for, uh, prior to this meeting, uh, by Brian Work, was an indication of the lots that we're going to, that Dean had offered the trees to, uh, now tonight, there was trees offered here as well, so, um, obviously this is a matter of date.
That was also trees offered to Linda Town Hall, who made the offer to me either than Linda, and I'm on board there.
Yes, and again, I don't, didn't recognize that you were...
Just moving to the town area, we were building there.
That's this one.
That would definitely become a...
This packet.
Becomes a mass town, uh, I guess, I'm gonna take much of this building that's thanks to that location, would that be something reasonable to make?
You want that for building it for a lot, 'cause you have two lots.
Yeah, well, it's two lots, I think two buildings, I think two buildings, there are two buildings.
Is that what it is, two buildings? So it's two buildings and two lots, doesn't make any difference?
Three buildings.
Three buildings.
Any lot, any lots, it's the...
Yeah, yeah. And again, what, you need them, but you feel comfortable.
Right, we don't need them everywhere.
But you feel comfortable if you want it to screen again, property which was...
I guess that concludes my portion, so unless there's other questions, um...
Um, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Um, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Have you ever done any study down as far as putting a stoplight back there?
Not at this point, no.
I think that'd be one of the outcomes that might come out of a study.
The traffic impact analysis would address that.
I think if you go, if you look at one of the original first layouts you have, I, I kind of want to come back to that issue of traffic patterns as well. Is there an assumption that there will be a right turn lane coming out of St.?
We do have one shown right here.
I'm assuming that's got to be considered almost essential.
Well, and I think that was one of the things the planning commission also said, at very least, they wanted to see.
I had read, in addition to Tim's concerns with headlights, which was definitely a concern, there was a request for studies to be done on the noise levels of the air conditioners. And then reading through this, and I know I marked it somewhere, but it said they have since been moved inside, so that will not become an issue.
All compressor units are inside the building, yes.
And, and just because I have to ask, how do you dissipate the heat that gets generated from those when they're inside?
The new system they're using today is they built a compressor room, and those compressors run in that room. And then they either exhaust that from that room with a wall fan, or they get that heat into the building for heating the building in the winter.
And then they can move enough of it out in the summer that it is?
Right, again, it's a twenty-four inch diameter.
Big, okay. But the noise will not be a factor to anybody who is on that property line.
The refrigeration compressor, you won't hear, again.
But the air conditioning units are?
The air conditioning units are up on top. That was one of the things that, originally, we had looked at putting them down here. But in Dean's discussions with some of the heating and ventilating people, I thought it was better to put them up top, so we've got them up top with some screening on those.
What's the noise on those?
No one knows. They can tell you that they're fifteen seer, and the highest efficiency you can get. And no company manufactures a B V rating on their compressors or their air conditioners. So I can't give you an answer, I'm sorry.
General common sense would say that would be the quietest area that you could put them, though.
Right.
Anywhere, so.
You put a wall around them, and it, any sound is going to go up.
Right.
And that is.
We do have them drawn with walls around them.
Yeah.
I, I have a store in Stillwater, and I got mine, may have heard some different on the road, and then, as a technical neighborhood, and there's no problem, you can barely hear them.
Again, the state has moved from eight seer to eleven seer, and now it's producing new phonics to fifteen seer, which means the efficiency's way up, and the, and the due that, they, they've slow motioned down. In other words, you got to make the most of your gas if you're not moving stuff as fast.
The reason, the reason I was asking the question before in terms of the right-hand turn lane? I mean, obviously, when traffic comes out of station lane, people either want to go turn left to go up thirty-five, or go straight across, or take a right and go to, head south. What the plan commission has approved, I mean, it's shown on that drawing, and I guess, and I guess my question is, is for the village attorney. Are we then approving this as, yeah, that, that's going to be there?
That's in the, in the document, right-hand turn lane.
Okay. That's all I need to know.
Yeah.
And you foresee no stopping when there's noise coming in, though, and hoping on left, I mean, you don't need anything wider than the station lane?
With the, I've done.
Our mailboxes won't get clipped off?
We have, we have a template for putting on here that shows turn radiuses. And that's why we've got this as wide as we do and cut back as much as we do it.
If there's a car standing?
Cars shouldn't be sitting here waiting to come on.
If people pull off, you know, the people coming from station lane, if you pull up to the stop sign and somebody comes around, is there enough room for me to get around that?
There's, uh. I believe this was, uh, what was that, the easement width here, was that a hundred feet?
What, the length?
No, a hundred and.
Hundred twenty-five.
Hundred twenty-five feet from here to here, so I mean, at twenty foot per car, you could, you could stack six cars there.
Well, if I'm coming from my house on station lane.
Right, and here, here would be the stop sign.
Okay, and if I'm going to go left, not right, and if the semi is coming, is he going to hit me when he comes around the corner?
There's, you could park six cars here.
No, she, I understand what you, that's a normal width street. Yeah, it's a normal width street, yeah.
Yeah, that's a normal width street, so.
Semis can make the turning radius on normal width.
If I can still water and you hit the road.
I can't remember, as you come down thirty-five to take the right, to go on station lane, is there, is there a turn lane there?
No, this is on thirty-five, is it?
Yeah, on thirty.
It's a white shoulder, but it's not a turn. What about cars coming out, is there any way to direct store traffic so that they can't take a left duck through the neighborhood and there becomes another exit?
It is a possibility, somebody had mentioned to me totally, you know, totally apart from this process, you know, and you, if you got a trouble, probably, you can always put up a, you know, no left hand, no, no left turn, no right turn direction, the answer is that is, yes, that is doable.
The only problem with that, then, is anybody that's back here that chops at the store can't, can't go back into the neighborhood.
Get a lot of traffic coming into the store from that neighborhood. Can you actually turn that, make that exit bend to the right? So that it forces you to turn right on there?
No, in other words, make it a right turn only. Go off, yeah, that could be done.
You know, can I, can I ask you a question? I'm sorry, I interrupted somebody, please finish.
Go, go ahead.
If a semi is turning down through there, nine times out of ten, it, it varies where that semi is going to drive. And I drive a fall truck, and it, it all becomes where the traffic is, what's going to happen to the edge of that road?
We have curb and gutter along here, and around this island, and around here. So the entrances do have curb and gutter on them.
Right, I'm saying on the other side, we know when they're making that swing.
On the private property.
Yes. On the other side, on the north side of that street, we're going to have the issue with.
You mean my house?
All, all that asphalt, but, but showing if you break out.
Concrete breaking up my driveway.
Our driveway's not across from the entrance, is it?
It's right in the middle of your entrance. It's, it's right across from the entrance, yeah.
Directly across the street, according to that.
Just as a, as a point, if I'm reading this drawing right, are you not putting a turning lane there, a left turn lane, as you exit the, the facility there onto Highway thirty-five? Does that not show a left turn lane?
Shows a right turn lane.
I mean, a right turn lane, I'm sorry.
That's correct.
Left, right. Yeah, okay, and I, I'm not sure if that's going to help any of the conversation that we had, but the street is, is therefore wider than it is now, right? Okay.
From the.
From the exit out, from the exit out, yes, yes. Well, all I'm saying is, is for, what I, what I'm saying is, is the argument was, or a question was, is about a left turning truck there. Can, am I going to be able to turn right onto Highway thirty-five and another truck come around? And it looks to me, if you have a right turn lane there, that A, that's going to hold probably five or six cars, like you said, and there's be plenty of room for people to, to turn left onto station lane. That's all I'm saying, is I just wanted to make sure that there was, that people mentioned, and that there is indeed a right turn lane there off of station lane. That's all I wanted to bring up, because I don't know that it has, or it was, maybe I wasn't.
Are there any, exactly, establishments where large trailer type of semis go right through the parking lot? And how are they going to make that turn there, what if cars are parked way at the south end of the parking area? I can't recall seeing a parking lot where trucks drive through or charging.
Pass past handicap parking spaces. Egress for pedestrians to cross the parking lot. Rides during sunlight access in the back of the building, which is not going to be decent for the people that live on the west side.
There's houses back there.
I know that.
That's why.
I've been there.
There's too small of a piece of property for the size of the building.
I'm going to guess the answer to that question, Tim, as a practical matter, is if you look at when, how much grocery shopping is done, that they can only deliver groceries between seven and noon, which is going to be at a time when the parking lot is probably going to be minimally used by cars.
Your main entrance is up here.
It's part of their conditional, it's part of their conditional use permit.
Who's going to run the grocery store?
Probably the name, there's three people looking at it.
What about senators and somebody stole seven to noon?
None whatsoever?
Semi truck deliveries will be made from seven thirty a.m. till noon, weekdays only.
Is it semis, or is it like large?
Pardon?
Beer truck, your coke truck, your Pepsi truck, your chip truck, your bread truck.
Those are, those are not semis.
Truck trucks are pretty big, though, they're not semis, but they're big trucks. They're going to come on this little truck to deliver to the store on the store.
Yeah, there could be more, more traffic from Tanamex with the summer.
I don't know if anybody wants to speak to the issue of deliveries, I mean, I certainly can't.
No, I don't think, well, unless somebody runs a grocery store, I don't think anybody here can. People have done it, but they don't run a grocery store.
You suppose in time, some of these truck drivers have come in and, and realized, hey, we've got a traffic jam here. Let's go the other road, let's go down North Road, that's on this side. Let's go down North Road and take the back road into the grocery store. Are those trucks allowed on North Road? Yep. Are they, do they break up the?
Well, our engineer could probably tell you if they're designed to handle.
Pardon?
They're not designed for that kind of traffic. I mean, the only thing you really could do is put some signs up there.
Can I ask a question, as far as like the road wear and tear, and I mean, you get the bigger trucks are going to have sort of erosion of, of the quality of the street? I mean, are we basically just at risk for that as adjoining property owners? That if it gets hit with an assessment, I mean, is there anything to protect us from the convenience that Mr. Hanson's getting from this? Would we have to bear the burden of, of the road repairing?
I'm just going to ask.
If I finished paying off that burden, when it was dropped on me.
Was this, was this issue discussed at plan commission at all?
No.
No.
At the time, they, I, I forget the exact number, there weren't that many semis a week.
Or one.
Whatever, one, two, three a week, whatever, it was a low number, so I didn't, myself, I didn't think of the pushing that road. But if you keep it on the road, like, you know, if you got on the edge, I, I wouldn't think a semi, I live on Michaelson Street, and somebody's going down my street once in a while, but you wonder where they're going, but I don't, I don't know if a couple semis made the difference, but.
The semis are heavy full of dry goods, they're not, they're not loaded with gravel or concrete or those kinds of.
They're still, they're still, I don't care if it's a load of pendered chips, they're still semi.
It's just that it's not what we typically incur now.
No gravel trucks go down your street.
Not in the road.
But there, but there eighty thousands and ninety thousand, they're going to break your street up, that'll break your street up.
Development's done.
But zappos are like way down, so they're not, they're not running up and down the street.
Question is, who's responsible for paying for the, which is not, should not be a burden of the resident people.
That's where I'm concerned.
Valid question.
Very valid, because a residential street is just becoming, I don't know, short section has become very commercial.
Yeah, especially that first, you know, two hundred feet of them.
You know, Kevin, you, as you just said, the other roads are, could not support the truck traffic. It would be my contention that that section of that, a couple hundred feet of Krattley isn't built any better. Station lane, excuse me, it's, it's not designed for that truck traffic either. I think that what we need to do is a collaborative effort here to contact the Department of Transportation and do whatever we can to make sure that that, where you're showing the entrance and the exit now is closed off, that it's bermed, and that all traffic is going to come right in off of thirty-five directly.
That's a rock.
Well, well, you know. Well, we need a little more than luck, we need an attorney, oh, we've got one of those, don't we?
I, I agree with you, I agree with you.
You know, we do what we can to implement that.
I, I think, I think the board should push that, too.
Who handles the burden of cost? The local people that live on that street, or?
Are you, I'm talking about if we can get it on entrance and exit off thirty-five.
If the other way is you can, and going through.
I would, I would submit that it may be appropriate for the developer, if we have to come off that village street, pay for, as they, I mean, you're going to make this right turn lane there, we do a little bit more work to reinforce that piece of the road, to make it more worthy structurally for the type of traffic that we're anticipating. Because if we say the other roads aren't suitable for truck traffic, then why would this be?
Six, three inches, we should be able to do like a two or four inch over there.
Yeah, that's what, yeah.
Probably two to three inches would do it.
Three inches, that bring that up.
Yeah.
Six inch blacktop.
I don't understand the question. The, the shoulder of that road.
Well, the shoulder would be built.
Same time, the, the shoulder, the, the fifteen feet of highway coverage on each side of the road, blacktop. The blocks is, so. If you're going to, when you're going to increase that, you're going to increase that load all the way out to the edge.
Well, that, that's true, but as, as a truck driver, you're going to use.
If you go off the road onto the, the rock, the, the blacktop, it'll run over. I, I love your idea of building, we all want it.
What about a traffic light, based on that? Is there a mean traffic?
Well, first of all, we can't, we can't put a traffic light there, okay, unless, unless.
All that, a lot of traffic without a traffic light, somebody trying to turn left onto thirty-five, walk down, go straight across.
The only reason I say we can't put one there, just like we couldn't put one over here, you know, our one traffic light. You know, we couldn't put it there, we made a request to the DOT, said we want a traffic light, right? My assumption is that someone, you know, that we're going to do the study, because that's part of the condition, right? That may call for a traffic light, and to the extent that it does, you know, I'm going to fall back on Dean's original comments made the very first time he talked to us, which is he'll pay for whatever infrastructure is required. I have no idea how the DOT views additional stoplights on thirty-five. I would just think it'd be a lot more efficient to have turn lanes rather than stoplights. If you just look at it, if you just draw a picture and look, look down on it, it would just make more sense to do that. Keep traffic coming, same way if you had, you know, access off thirty-five, so you could turn left and allow people to go around it, and then keep on going.
You have the nine thousand cars that are going by, you're entering and exiting that lane with the nine thousand cars that they have.
But to answer your question, as far as.
Can I just make a comment on the count? Because I live on that corner, and if there were six hundred cars coming up and down station lane every single day, I wouldn't be able to get out of my driveway, I got to believe that count is suspect, I'm sorry.
I would agree with.
It's not that.
I agree with Tim.
Exorbitant at this particular point, there's not three hundred people that live back there, okay? Come on. And, and how many is it, it's the same car coming in, in and out two or three times a day, because they, you know, got to go to the post office, it's true.
And I'd have to agree with Tim on that, I mean, having, living, living on that street, you can literally sit there in my front yard and go for hours and see nobody, I mean, nobody.
That's what you actually counted, that was the recorder.
But I.
That's the one that's not.
But I know, I know what's happening here, which is you're picking up, it's, you've only got, what, three, three houses on that portion of station lane, and it's traffic where station lane goes in and then it veers off to suburbs.
Pine Street, Pine Street and all that stuff on the side.
It's that, it's traffic going. It's, it's traffic going there. And then subsequently, that development area coming back out Station Lane. Has to be where the traffic is coming from, because it sure isn't coming from around the other bend, because it just isn't there.
Not everybody that's on Station Lane uses Station Lane to get to thirty-five. They go off the back lane.
Well, not everybody. I never, I never.
Yeah, I don't know if this helps or not, and I don't want to muddy the water any, any more than it already is. I did my own study on Station Lane, and I did not count over a twenty-four hour period. But, you know, obviously, you don't have the same traffic from midnight until late in the morning that you have from seven o'clock in the morning until five or six o'clock at night. I did mine March of last year at various times during March, seven or eight entries. And my frequency is this, is I calculated anywhere from point four cars a minute up to one point four cars a minute. Average might be around point eight cars a minute on Station Lane, coming, either going into Station Lane or coming out of Station Lane. That's what I got. And, you know, that.
Are you units, right? If it's one a minute, that's sixty an hour, that'd be, nine hours, you'd have three hundred cars.
Yeah, that's about what he's saying. That's about what he's saying. And that's, I'm just saying, one a minute, think about that. That's, yeah. Or less than that, three fourths of a car a minute, a car every minute and a half, or a car every eighty seconds, something like that.
I'd like to, I'd like to.
We've got five a day.
Really, I think one of the remaining issues here is the road issue, which I think is a very relevant one. It would seem to me that just by, if we have to work off the assumption the DOT is not going to give us access, then that small stretch of road in front of the two residents across the street, that is clearly going to get significantly more traffic in the future than it is today. Agreed? Now, you were saying something before in terms of, and I, and I was, I was just picking it up out of one ear and I didn't hear both of it. Was there a suggestion made to?
Well, I was.
To add two to three inches?
Two to three inches would beef up that road to the point where its structural number would be sufficient to handle semis, the truck traffic.
Well, the only thing I was looking at then was our assessment policy as it relates to, if you just took a typical assessment policy, say you had to replace the road just on the property, which is in question here, which would also pick up then the two residences, the only two residences across the street. Normally, the village pays half of a road repair and the residents pay the other half, okay? So, in this case, you'd have, theoretically, you've got two on one side, one biggie on the other. You know, the, that could be altered, I would think. Can, could this be done, Bill?
That's a good question. It's not easy to do, because when you do, when you do assessments, you have to equally distribute based upon the benefit. Now, if one could make an argument that the grocery store benefits more than the homeowners, then you could do it, but you'd have to be very careful how you set that out.
I think it's a very valid issue.
What's very valid there?
That road is going to take more use, okay? And, you know, your point before.
Not my fault, not my responsibility.
And in the future, to the extent that the road is getting more commercial use than was originally intended, you know, is there a way to distribute that differently than our current ordinance for that section of land, or for that section of road and not land? And my answer is, I would hope that there is.
Because we aren't benefiting from that at all. In fact, we're being hit from it and.
It's, it's not, I mean, it's not unlike what happened, you know, a long, long time ago, I think it was down on Forest Street. The cost, the residents said, look, the cost, you know, far exceeds the value of our housing. Now, this is like twenty years ago. And so, the board made a decision to change the assessment policy, and so the village ended up picking up more of that cost at that point in time, as I understand, and as a story was told to me. I mean, there is, there is a logic here that says, this, this is not, this little chunk is not quite like the next two hundred foot chunk down, and it certainly isn't like the next two hundred beyond that. And so, there would be, you know, is there significant benefit, you know, accruing to the store to have that road in nice repair? And the answer is, yeah, there is. Is it more so? Is there some benefit to a new road to the resident? Yes. But should that balance be changed? It would seem to me that I would have no trouble with that.
If it's logical, if it's logical that they're going to need to update that road to accommodate whatever vehicles are on it, if this building was not going in, would you be doing anything to that road? Why would the residents be responsible for, the reason why that road is being maintained and updated is because of what you're putting on that piece of property? It's nothing to do with the people across the street. Yeah, they drive on it, but it has absolutely, if, if that building was not there, that road would not be changed. And I was going to speak from the point of them actually doing the front end work. I assume we're not touching that with our, on our end. But as time goes on and road deterioration occurs from the heavy usage and trucks, that's where my question came in. I, I guess maybe I should get that clarified.
Yeah, there's the jump ball, and then there's fourth quarter.
Yeah. I mean, I assume from all this pre-work being done, we're not getting hit with anything extra, I would hope, but.
No.
I'm talking further down the road when.
That is what we're.
Maintenance occurs, right, right.
Could I ask a question? Just backing up one more step, I mean, a lot of these problems would be solved if there was a progress from thirty-five. So, there was some language, well, let's ask if we can do that, but maybe stronger language would be to make this whole thing contingent on getting that approval, because, I mean, yeah, the law doesn't, we zone C one, I understand that, but there's a lot of examples and possible uses of a C one application, but they don't all necessarily work a lot. There's a store that's so oversized that it doesn't go on a lot, and, and one of the reasons is that there's no decent incentive for it, that should be taken into consideration. I, I'm not seeing anywhere that just because this has been zoned C one, that a grocery store should be allowed, and all these things should just be tried, attempted to be worked out, because I, I just don't think it should be cut and dragged at this point in time.
And we are revisiting the same issues that we revisited twelve months ago when this came to public hearing. We talked about all these, and we're still, you know, so, you know, why it even got to where it got to without all these things being worked out in the first place? You know, my, my greatest concern is, is the white elephant issue with, with the issue of a grocery store, which is like, one of my other questions about, is it a subdivisible building? Is it going to turn into a strip mall when the grocery store doesn't make it? And, and perfect example of that is a county market in Richmond, right on their main highway there, when there was already a super value in town, already in the Conno Foods in town, Walmart Superstore beat them in. That store was open for less than a year, and it's been closed for a year and a half. Sure, the city's still collecting their real estate taxes on it because they don't want to foreclose on the building, but now you've got a big, empty building doing nothing, serving nothing, doing nothing for the community. Dean says he needs four hundred and fifty cars a day to do his seven million dollars a year, one percent profit. Seventy grand is what you walk away with after three hundred and sixty-five days of all that. It, you know, there's, there's a big, a couple of big players in town with regards to running the grocery business, and, and one of them was down in the center of town in Hudson, and they decided to put the padlock on the door because it wasn't making it, because it wasn't doing what it needs to do.
The store did fine. They were just, they moved that store because they were kicked out.
That was a three generations store that went pads up.
Yes.
How long has that piece of property been zoned commercial?
It's been a C two for nearly ten years.
You're saying C one or C two?
C two. It was conservancy before, it's C two.
It was rezoned last March.
Last March.
You have any other information that you want to cover?
Can I just play?
Are there any issues which we haven't discussed?
We got a little clarification on the recommendations from the Plan Commission.
Sure.
The semi deliveries, if that could be all deliveries, not semis alone, I would recommend looking at that, because other delivery trucks are going to borrow a hundred percent. There was something about a lifetime guarantee on the trees. Lifetime of the tree, lifetime of the land, lifetime of the building, what does a lifetime guarantee mean?
I had similar comments. I had some comments about that. Who's life?
Yeah, who's life? Mine.
That bill's response was that it could be added as a covenant to the property, whoever would own it would be, would be so obligated.
The Plan Commission, I remember the report said that the developer was going to strike the traffic site, like Mr. Hanson said, he would not, he would not question that, so. Surely, I mean, some of those people would be wanting to get their traffic started. If there's only bollard lights at the intersection, if there's a pedestrian in the street walking to the grocery store, if there's no, there's no additional light on them, it's a hazard for that pedestrian getting hit by one of six hundred cars in a day. So, it's those two, if they're in place for traffic setting up, I recommend making all deliveries from seven in the morning, and a question on the bollard, but I don't want stadium lighting there, you know, because that eliminates town and stadium town people. But if there's only those small lights, and people do, you know, if they're using a store, walking their dogs, whatever, running past, you have additional traffic, you don't have additional lighting for pedestrians in that area, and you have your, adding some traffic, but you're not adding additional lighting. If I'm a destination.
Dean, do you want to?
Want to comment on some of that?
Yes.
I heard most of it. The bollard lighting, the, the original bollard lighting.
Mike?
Yes, I'm sorry. I should know better.
At the Plan Commission, we discussed, we have these seventeen conditions on here. They originally came in with, with regular streetlight type things, and after much discussion, we thought it would be more beneficial to the neighbors to the north if it was bollard lighting, so it would be less obtrusive to the neighbors. I believe, one of our members is an electrician, and his opinion was bollard lighting would give us sufficient lighting at the entrance of the road coming in and out. He pretty much confirmed with that. There's different types of bollard lighting.
There is, there is a, a typical streetlight there now, at that intersection.
Is this intersection?
At thirty-five.
At thirty-five and Station Lane.
Yeah, I mean, I first.
That's quite a ways away from where that entrance and exit.
I first said, for cutoff lighting, I thought that would do it, but they were saying at the distance you might see, you know, even a cutoff light, the neighbors would see it, so if you lower the light, it would be better for the neighbors. Just about the, the semis, the, the time of day is for the semis, we specifically did make that semis, the smaller trucks would come at different times, and again, you can't regulate every truck coming in there, but at least if you can control the big ones, that'll make a big difference.
Because my point was, there's only one to five a week of the semi, but there's maybe up to fifty of the, of the coke trucks.
Yeah.
You can control.
Those are still quite large trucks.
Would it be, would it be unreasonable to say certain daytime hours for the smaller trucks? Is that?
Are truck deliveries business hours?
Truck deliveries aren't business hours, but.
They would be after hours?
We can, we can control when the grocery trucks come in. You know, pop trucks, if they're every day or every other day, but chip trucks and, and bread trucks and those kinds of things.
They'd be coming in at midnight then, is that what you're saying, or two in the morning?
I'm sure they probably will be there two in the morning. We're going to be busy from six to ten, so.
So, you're saying you'd have truck traffic in the middle of the night?
No. This is what the gentleman said.
Oh, the, the way you said it, Dean, you said they'd be sitting there in a parking lot.
So, tell us, tell us, Dean, how much traffic are you going to have in semis? How much traffic in straight jobs and when?
Semi traffic, maybe one every other day, maybe.
I'm sorry, say that again, so it's for record.
Semi traffic, they talk about maybe one every other day, to the maximum of one a day.
Okay.
All right. Pop trucks and potato chip trucks and bread trucks are daily, and those same trucks are pulling into Mama Maria's every day, and they're also pulling into your other restaurants in town here daily.
But is it daytime or is it?
It's always daytime.
Always daytime. And they're not pulling in overnight?
So, there's nothing that would be like during closed hours that would ever be pulling in?
Not that I believe.
Your garbage all over there, four o'clock.
Your garbage truck, what time's your garbage truck set up?
The garbage truck has.
About four o'clock in the morning, because I can hear their backup.
Yeah, but they've been told numerous times.
Well, we, we don't have control over certain businesses over for, I'm not sure commercially why, as they can have their own bollard. It may not necessarily be waste management.
What's the repercussion if a semi shows up after hours?
Well, they could be charged with disturbing the peace.
You know, most likely don't get unloaded.
They don't like that.
Most likely will not get unloaded.
In that sense, the super value are going to tolerate that, sure.
Well, anyway, the semi hours are listed on here.
But, I just wanted to confirm, when are the straight job hours, from when until when?
Again, I would imagine they would be daytime hours from eight to four thirty or eight to five, when most trucks are. But normally, they have to stock stores in the morning. I don't, in my experience watching County Market and those places up there, I don't see pop trucks in the afternoon ever. They're always knockshells in the morning. Only if it's logical.
Well, I can't help but believe that the truck that's going to deliver pop and potato chips to Village Market is going to be the same truck that's delivering them across the street to the convenience store.
It is.
And by count, there's over eleven hundred cars a day going in and out of the convenience store. Nobody says anything. And those, the trucks that come in, it's in, drop a load, then they're gone. But I can't believe that you're going to have a separate run going just to Village Market for the same stuff that's being delivered across the street. So, I'm just trying to put it in that same perspective. You can't have all deliveries for all trucks to all facilities can't all be in the morning.
In the morning.
Otherwise, they'd need twice as many trucks.
Well, I'm just, you know, what I'm thinking about is, is from the time of, I'm not sure when people would object, but when they come home at, you know, six, seven o'clock, and then there's this decent truck running outside townhouse. It's not too pleasant to listen to. So, if it's, you know, during normal work hours, that's one thing, but if it's after hours, then, then I got a problem. My guess is, is people, those people that drive the trucks want to get home at five o'clock too, so.
On the issue of the road, Kevin.
Yeah.
Would it make sense to add asphalt to the top of and possibly even widen that road a couple of feet, Station Lane?
Some of those.
I mean, like now, I mean, when, as a part of this.
Some of those items are actually going to come on as part of that traffic impact analysis, where you're going to look at what the risks are, what improvements should be done. Probably should be some verification of what you're alluding to is, you know, what curriculums is out there, what's the aggregate base. Probably have developer run a pavement analysis based on. Probably have developer run a pavement analysis based on...
And I'm working off the assumption that whatever comes out of that traffic study and whatever the village elects to adopt, then that would become a part of the developer's cost. Yeah, I'm going back to the original first meeting where Dean made his pitch. He said if there's infrastructure requirements, then, you know, he'll pay for it.
And Larry, since it's not a great project, that means you couldn't take property from the front of my house to accommodate any...
I don't know why, well, we're not going to be, well, we're not going to be taking property. Why would we be taking property, Tim?
You know, the road's got to be wider, because that's...
Well, the road, the roads exist within a right of way, okay? And you don't own your ditch any more than I own my ditch. So, nobody owns the ditch, it's common property.
But it looks like most...
Pardon?
It looks like most of the widening will be to Mr. Hanson's property. The extra lane will cut into. And there won't be a widening that will affect the property to the north.
And I'm not saying it needs to be, I'm just saying, you know, it might, okay? But I'm at, what I'm asking, Kevin, is in the short term. Now, the other good thing, as I understand, is if we were to request the study, it only takes about a month.
Takes about a month to generate the study, and then that would be forwarded off to the DOT for their approval. So you're probably looking at...
Then eventually, they kick it back to us. And so that whole little process takes about, how long?
I thought, you know, two to three months.
All right, we'll say three months. Nothing takes two months. That's three months.
Meetings.
Yeah.
Then, based on that study, that study, does that carry any obligations with it? Or is it just a study?
It'll actually make recommendations of what improvements.
But there's a big difference between a recommendation, I recommend that you paint your house. But I can't make you paint your house.
You know, based on, you know, a meeting that we had with the DOT, or Joe was part of, there will be a, they will have to apply for a permit to do additional lane. And the only way that that's going to be justified is through that traffic impact analysis.
Running, or at all?
Yes, at all. They want to see that study justifying their need for that additional lane.
I want to study it...
Why new, the opening to the highway?
I want to study justifying an entrance and exit from the highway. That's what I want to see. I'll help Bill write it.
You know, unfortunately, DOT over the years has gotten real strict. There is a formal process to go through to appeal it.
When we did, when Kratley was widened, did we get DOT approval?
Any construction within the right of way requires approval, it's a permit. Yeah, it's a permit.
As long as you're doing that, if the highway, because from what I understand, you was at that meeting, that extra highway frontage, if that extra highway frontage can be donated to the village and be used to move this building off the back property line, that's fine with us.
If you think it's difficult to get the Department of Transportation to give us entrance and exit, just think of what the probability is that they'd give us some property.
Well, that should be...
They're not going to want to give that up.
That could be part of my request, you know, they can only, they can always say no.
It might be easier than an access, quite frankly.
Really?
To tell them in the meeting.
Yeah, that was kind of the direction that we're advising. That was kind of the direction, is to try to get the twenty feet of the right of way and move the facility up.
Who would?
The Department of Transportation.
That was their idea?
That was our idea. That was Terry Phelan's idea. And here's what Helgason stated, that the village or developer would have to make a formal request for an access right of way. The real estate section, there, meaning the DOT, would handle that. And they would have to get in touch with them to let them know what's entailed. After the village or developer talks to real estate, the request is routed through their region, and all the various managers sign off on the request. The village should contact Ann Greasy in real estate. Helgason stated that twenty feet would get another three feet of berm. So now you'd be up to one hundred and seven with the berm anyway. There's a process, and we could ask for it. I think it would make sense to do the TIA and make that request. But then, I think we should have a, and I'm not an engineer, but you know, you got all that space out there that's in the right of way, and say, this is what we want to do, and give that to them with the TIA. And see what happens, you know. One, it's going to entail, they're going to have to donate some property to us. Whether in fact they're going to do this or not, I don't know. But we owe it to ourselves and the community to ask. Now's the time to ask. Don't do it after everything is constructed. So I think we do a service to the community to go through that process.
What they, what they were saying is it's more likely for that to happen than it would be for access to 35. Was that...
But access wasn't asked for, that is an accurate statement, correct?
Let me read what they said. He stated that the policy of the DOT is that if a property has access to an abutting local road, that access will come off that road and not the state highway, regardless of whether it is a commercial site or residential site or whatever. He stated there had been conversations at least two to three years ago over this quad, meaning that intersection up there or that area, and what the DOT might consider in allowing access to the property from 35. At the time, the answer was no. Adding another access affects the movement of the highway and the safety of the highway. We would have to prove why we need access. That would be accomplished through the TIA, which would analyze the traffic generated by the facility. It would look at the existing access and what type of mitigation would be needed to improve the existing access at Station or Station Lane. And if that can't be done, would another access help with that intersection? If you're going to ask for another access, then DOT would require that. We're asking the village to require it because we would like to see what intersection treatments need to be. That's what we talked about.
So clarify for me, it sounds like the state is saying if the village is requiring it based on the TIA, and the village should request for it? Make the request for the break? Can we hear from our village attorney on that?
Yeah, I mean, okay, I was listening.
It says, I think it says it pretty clear here. Help me out if I'm saying, if I'm reading this wrong, I'll read it the third and final time, okay? Okay, pay attention, there'll be a quiz. Stated that the village would, Abad stated that the village would need to prove why they need an access. That could, that would be accomplished through the TIA, Traffic Impact Analysis, which would analyze the traffic generated by the facility. It would look at the existing access and what type of mitigation would be needed to improve the existing access at Station. So, we do the TIA, and as part of that, we forward, this is what we want to do. I think.
And I assume you read some commentary in their persuasive speech.
I would hope so. I mean, engineers, English majors, whatever. I'm not trying to be too sarcastic here, but there's a process. The DOT is a government agency, and what they're saying is they're very, very reluctant to give us any space on there. So folks, the argument has got to be really, really, really good.
Can you go offhand, like, is, I'm just curious, like, what's their mindset? Is part of their reluctance because then the DOT is responsible for paying for that access?
They're so concerned about safety and access on those roads, if you got, I think they think we've already got too many areas along from Station Lane all the way through the village in North Hudson in terms of access, primarily out there in that commercial area through Freedom there.
I would...
Well, what about part of that presentation to the DOT is to actually change, obviously, the speed limit sign that's just north of Starwood from 45 down to 35?
That can be part of it.
Already kicked down the traffic.
That can be part of it too. But again, my point is, is there's all that, that huge amount of, that hundred and twenty-five feet that Dean was talking about from the edge of the road, that right of way there. And that's just, that's just one side of the road. So it just seems to me that we could say, you know, come on, there's a space here. We think we ought to do with this, whatever that is.
I think one of the discussions that came up at Plan Commission and one of the meetings was, when they built the bank, they couldn't have an access to 35. There were accesses on the other road, and they had that little thing from Mama Maria's that you had to cut through.
Sure.
So it sounds like they might have asked for one too, but...
I'm sure.
It was easier to get around.
I think there's a big difference between the bank and a grocery store.
All I'm saying is...
More persuasive.
Don't see too many semis going through the bank.
And I don't like this plan that we got here. I'm telling you right now, I don't like the plan with one access off of Station Lane. The reason that I, the reason that I voted yes in favor of the plan that Dean had back in March was, A, every, there's a seventy percent commentary from the village that says, we want a grocery store. That was part of a survey, and that was part of the written and verbal communication that came to the board.
Actually, more than seventy.
Well, I'm hopefully not exaggerating like our politicians are now. So, I saw, what I saw there was the, the people in the community wanted a grocery store. The people around that didn't. The people that were closest to that area didn't want it. But as part of Dean's plan, what I saw were two accesses. There's an access off of 35, and there is one off of Station Lane. And personally, I would think, I was thinking at the time, maybe I can talk Dean into closing the one off of Station Lane, and we just have one off of Highway 35. I mean, that would have been my preference, is to have all of it come off of 35. But, you know, it's early in the, in the process, and so, you know, I held up my hand to, you know, that, that early, that early plan. This plan I'm not so wild about, because I just don't like it coming on that one corner. And I thought we were going to have two. So Dean, I'm sorry to editorialize here, but I just did.
Yeah, I think it's a great idea. And being a businessman, I would probably, could see the possibility of reselling a piece of land, maybe a hundred feet along the north line to one of the neighbors, and then I would not have access to Station Lane.
You'd be forcing the hand for the DOT to give you access.
Oh, I see. I see. I'm a little slower than most of them, Dean.
I understand what he just, what he just said.
Now you let the cat out of the bag, because it's an open hearing, open meeting. What's that?
Like about a foot wide strip, is that what you're talking?
I'm telling you, I see, I see, it's a critical issue with this board. I'm just, from my viewpoint, this is a critical issue with this board, the community at large, and the developer. We need to resolve that.
Why don't we have a tenant party? Why is there not a grocery store stepping up to the plate saying, I want this to be here?
Yeah.
What's the question again?
Why is there not a grocery store already signed up to go in there? We're talking about building a building here at the cost of the people that live around it. We've already lost our investments in our property. It wasn't going to be lost, we've already lost it by changing the zoning. Now, you put a facility in here, I've been told by real estate people and experts in the analysis that we will lose twenty to twenty-five percent more of a value of our home. Now we don't even have a tenant, and you're still talking about putting a building in with a traffic scenario that wasn't anything like it was originally. This is wrong, we're doing things out of, we've got a snowball, we're running out of control here, and we're not doing things in the right manner there. This is ridiculous. Just put things in perspective here, quit putting a square peg in a round hole. Please, put some logic.
What happens when you build a building and you don't have a grocery store that wants to go in there? There's nothing signed anywhere that a grocery store is going, wants to go in there. That's what he wants to put in there. There's no one saying, we want to go in there.
You'd have to talk to him about that.
Can you speak to that issue, Dean?
Yes, we've had a letter of intent from the same people who have the store downtown. They were, they were kicked out of the store downtown, and their volume downtown was more than sufficient, and I met with the headquarters. I've been with their president.
So, Alex, so you mean...
Shouldn't that be a part of this? It should be a part of this whole thing.
Again, I don't have anything to present to these people. They had a timetable to work on, and we're already three months past that timetable.
And you already said there was three people who were considering that.
And again, I'm sitting here tonight with nothing that I can offer anyone.
Is there a more suitable spot to put this grocery store rather than on that lot? I mean, is there anywhere else in Hudson that would be more suitable?
There's an empty place down on Second Street.
That's not for this board to decide.
Why didn't you make any of this done? I mean, why wasn't this a factor before you ever gave him the rezoning in the first place? Why wasn't any of this done? I just want an answer for that. I want to know why.
Why, what, just give me specific...
The Department of Transportation, why wasn't that all figured out before you gave him the rezoning of the property? Why was that issue not enforced, but to make sure that there was going to be a way to get in and out of that grocery store without having to turn onto a residential street? Why didn't any of you stand up and then say that that is a big deciding factor in rezoning? Because you knew you wanted to put a grocery store there.
Dean?
You know, you guys have put the cart before the horse, and now you're trying to backpedal, you know?
Again, the grocery store was something the village needed. We certainly could have built as big a building onto it as C2.
No, you couldn't have. Do not say that again. That building could not have been built in C2 in that area. Could it have been built on a C2 property? Yes, but not there according to the code. Don't say that again, because it's not correct.
Again, a building can be there in C2, it has the same entry and access problems as it does this building.
Not the same traffic, not the same size, nothing in C2. That's why, then why was it rezoned to C2? If it could be exactly the same in C3 as C2, why was it rezoned? There are reasons for that.
The request that was presented to the board was a single one, which is, should a piece of property be rezoned from C1 to C2? You could have the same request on other ones as well. Those requests in themselves do not require a traffic study, because somebody's just saying, I want this property rezoned. Now, no question about that.
For all the reasons that we're talking about it now...
And the issues with respect to roads were that there would be, I think the assumption was that the traffic patterns would be analyzed at the time. And very, and we probably all made some assumptions that the access off 35 would either likely be there. There might be some modifications. However, regardless of what improvements would be made, the developer indicated he would absorb them.
But you knew that that piece of property was surrounded by all residential to winship.
Sure it was.
That it was important to know about where the, you know, you turn in it, regardless if it was a grocery store or not.
Or anything else, that's right.
That still was going to create a volume of traffic, because you would have known that.
And, and he...
Why didn't you make him do that, is what I want to know. Tell me why you didn't make him do all of that? You knew what he wanted to put in there, you saw the plans, you, you people knew all of that. And you still went ahead, and I think your words were that you weren't sure what a C3 zoning entailed, but you went and gave your okay anyway.
Prior to the meeting, the answer to that is what I said.
Yeah, you certainly did. So being the president, if you didn't know, why would you even pay something that you weren't even sure of to begin with?
Can I, can I correct that statement? Prior to the meeting, I had said I wasn't sure what a C3 was, and so I spent some time trying to figure that out.
That's a question about an hour before you voted, in the meeting.
That's right.
What it was.
You're a president, you should have withheld any decision-making of that night until all of this was all compiled, all studied, all figured out, before you gave the rezoning. That could have been, you know, visited two months down the road at another meeting when you knew everything, had all of the facts, instead of going ahead and rezoning it, and now you're trying to make it right.
And it isn't going to be right. A thirty thousand square foot building is not going to be right on that property.
If a grocery store is so feasible in the village of North Hudson, why has it taken this long for another one to move in here?
Yeah, we've had, there's been grocery stores in North Hudson before. Where are they? There's probably a reason for that. There's probably a reason for that.
That may initially start out okay, but it's going to go belly up, and then it's going to be another commercial building. Another, you know, person will buy it and move in there.
Can I ask a question about, and I don't know if this is something that's done typically or not, but just in this example where Dean says there are prospective people with letters of intent, and, and so he appears to feel confident that he will have that set up as a grocery store. Is it ever, I mean, outlined to ask to see, to see those letters of intent, or to get some form of satisfaction that, that has already been, you know, shaken on, and that the deal is there, as far as before you let somebody actually build it, to know that there is a contract in force for?
He made it very clear early on that he was going to build the building no matter what, to me.
Some type of.
At the expense of the people that are living around it, the way I look at that now, that's fair and that operates.
I don't think he said at the expense of the people around it.
No, I'm saying at the expense. I'm, I'm saying this is at the expense of whether he built the building.
And that's your opinion?
Absolutely.
But is it, I mean, is it outlined to ask for that, or to get some sense of satisfaction?
You know, I'm just trying to think, I don't know that you would, you should put the village board in a position to say, okay, I've got a plan, put a grocery store, anything out here. Well, you know, I don't think, I don't think you can put a bank here. What do we know as a village board about putting a bank or any other commercial established? We've got a person here that's going to invest millions of dollars in the community. He's a, he's a developer, a business person. He, along with anybody else, has a right to do that. And I don't know, you know, I, I'm just trying to think here, I, I've been in business, you know, somewhat over the years, and I'm thinking, do I know enough to say, you know, Dean, I, I don't think a grocery store is going to go there. Do you know, you know what I'm saying? Or show me, show me letters of intent? That's his decision. That's his decision.
Well, no, it has to be a grocery store. If he's got a commitment for a grocery store, it has to be a grocery store.
Yeah. But you're asking, are you?
But if he builds a building, and there's no grocery store that wants to come in there, what do you do with that building?
I guess that's what I'm asking.
What's the point? What's the point of building, you're building something before, when County Market built, they knew they were going there.
Build a dream. If you build it, he will come. Well, who's the he? And when will they come?
He keeps saying they do this, they said this, who's they?
In answer to your question, that's the reason why the Planning Commission voted him down.
Voted him down.
Because, because, because nobody said they, he didn't have a, he didn't have anybody to manage or to do it.
No, I just ask him to back up what he said to be true, you know, I mean, as far as like, isn't, doesn't that just seem like good business, that you would at least say, yes, I do have, here's, you know.
Dean, are you prepared, are you at liberty to share with us who your letter of intent was?
You know, and maybe it's a shame on us for getting to this point, but it's obvious it's not working. Why can't it be tabled until, until the DOT? If the DOT says, let's go off thirty-five, then do what you're going to do. But if it's not, if, if, if it's not a duck, and it's not clapping, why put it there? It gets, we're forcing it to happen, and we shouldn't have to do that.
He's a property owner, he has every right to put what he wants on his property. It's like, add on to our houses, we want on our property.
That's the reason why it was rezoned.
A harmony in the village, is what that's saying.
I'm going to just request we take a five-minute recess. We've been at this for about two and a quarter hours. So five minutes, we'll be back. With great hesitation, I'll ask the question, are there any other new pieces of input that we haven't discussed? Okay. If not, then I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing portion of the meeting. Okay? Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Need to make a note. Okay. So now the board is in discussion on this issue.
I'll just ask the question, Larry, are we in a position to approve the Plan Commission's recommendation at this point? Or are we, would we want to suspend that until we get some sort of a response back from the Department of Transportation requesting our, regarding our request to have entrance and exit off thirty-five?
Just assume for the moment that, okay, let's table this and initiate this. Is that what you're saying? How do we initiate that?
You make a request to DOT.
Okay. Who pays for that?
Well, the, the way you've got it set up so far, you have the developer pay.
Mm-hmm. All right. I mean, it certainly was part of the Plan Commission's. What are other, other thoughts? Joe, Colleen?
I tend to agree with George that I think we do need to move forward and have the DOT do their analysis at, probably at the expense of Dean, since he did say that he would cover any costs for infrastructure, and costs related to infrastructure would be the analysis. So if that's the way that it needs to be done, I think that's what we need to do. Because it does seem more reasonable to come off of thirty-five than Station Lane, and I don't think we can include saying, if they don't do it, then they have to improve. I think we just need to go ahead and have the DOT do their analysis, and have them, or have the, either Dean or whoever is going to write the letter that's saying this is why it needs to be off thirty-five and not off Station Lane. So I don't think we can vote on this tonight, either.
Can I make a couple of comments?
Sure.
Not to steal the mic or anything. Over the past couple of days, I've been looking over a lot of the documents that are in here in our packets, as well as letters that have been written by the people in the community, and looking at, you know, data, and I have some of it here. And the bottom line for me is, I'm not ready to raise my hand, either yes or no, on this plan as I see it in front of me. That's my bottom line. And the reason, you know, there's some things that I, that I like about this plan, that there's other things that I don't like about it. When, when we reviewed the original plan, it was thirty thousand square foot building on, I'm not sure how many acres it is, and I think there were a hundred and sixty-four parking places, which were needed according to our ordinance. There was also an access road on the west side of the building, and there were, like I said, there were two accesses, one on Station Lane and one on Highway thirty-five. And I thought that that was a workable plan, from an initial plan, as far as I was concerned. But now, the building has increased by ten percent. There is a reduction in parking spaces from a hundred and sixty-four to a hundred and fourteen. I personally don't have a problem with that, because I, I don't think we need that many parking places, and I would like more green space, but that's, again, talking about my personal opinion. That access road on the west side of the building was eliminated, and I think that would be beneficial to, because I think the trucks were going to drive back there, and the docks were in the back on the back west side, and I thought that was a better plan, or that this plan is a better plan than the people on the west side. That's my personal opinion again here. I also think that, you know, some of the information on the amount of truck traffic there were, at least in the initial meeting that we had, were, were indicated as relatively low. But one of the other things that I keep thinking of, and, and there'll be people here that'll laugh at me, I'm sure, or, or worse, but I think that the fact that there's a rather large building there, the, the people in the back can benefit somewhat, because they'll have less noise from Highway thirty-five reaching their houses through that building. In looking at the layout of that building, you know, there is quite a big distance from Station Lane, or Higgins and Dunker's property there, to the building itself. You know, it's roughly a hundred and fifty to a hundred and sixty feet from that road to the building itself, because there's so much parking space, if you will, on the north side of the property. I'm just saying, that, that is useful information anyway, and, and can benefit. I'm just saying things that I like about it and things that I don't like about it. But it's obvious to me that we need, that we need to do the T, the traffic impact analysis, and we do need to request some access off of Highway thirty-five. And until we have that done, you know, I can't vote that I approve of this plan. That's my take on it.
Any thoughts?
Yeah, very well put, Joe. You've pretty much mirrored my concerns at this point. I, too, when we first looked at this, you know, I was brand new on the board, and boy, did I do my homework. I was, looked through the code book, and I do have some concerns at that point. I did realize that there wasn't a measurable difference in the amount of building that could be put on that lot, changing the zoning. I do realize it does affect the traffic count, and I think that's a concern here. I think what's truly also a concern is, this sort of goes two ways. If we were to look at all of the shifts of hardships, what, what benefits one resident around it can hurt the other, what hurts that, you know, it's just a constant shift. And, and on Dean's behalf, I think he's tried to come up with something that accommodates everybody in a situation that nobody likes. It's not an easy thing to do, and it's even harder when you've tried as hard as that. I always say this because I've been in the situation, and you don't have the support. And I heard somebody say, you know, on my behalf, it's going to fail, and, and this isn't what this village is made out of. This village is made out of people that support things, and, and I know it's, it's hard. I mean, it's a big building, and, and it's a big lot, and something ultimately was going to happen to it, and, and it is a challenge to work with. I feel sorry, you know, for, Tim, you know, it's an issue. The road issue, the potential responsibility and exposure that we face as a village for maintenance on this is something that does come up. I, too, would like to have everybody who's sitting out there looking at me know that this is going to succeed, that it wouldn't have the dramatic impact, but I can't sit here and say that. I would hope to God that Dean wouldn't put millions of dollars into something if he didn't know that he had somebody that was going to fill the space. I would think as a businessman, he should, unless he's got more money than, than God. I would hope that it would ultimately be a grocery store, but I have no guarantee of that, as does anybody sitting in this room, I don't think. But to get right down to the nuts and bolts of it, I do agree that we as a village need to try to support the fact that traffic on that street sounds like the biggest issue right now. If everybody is in agreement that if we were able to get traffic to come off of thirty-five, and that Dean wouldn't have to jump through the next flaming hoop, I think we, as a board, owe it to the residents to, to muster up a plan, to say, here's what we want to do. We'd like to move this building, make it a four-tier plan, try to slow the traffic down, first of all, forty-five to thirty-five. Try to move the building forward somewhere in that cushion, and reading through this, we've got up to twenty feet. Try to get this entrance and exit off of thirty-five. And if that doesn't work, we have to collectively understand if we can do this with altering Station Lane and making everybody happy. So at this point, I guess, having read through this thing, to the point of my eyes nearly bleeding for the last two days, it sounds like an integral part of it is getting Dean to say, yes, I will take care of the cost of a traffic count, and that we as a village work with Dean and go forward and try to get them to understand the importance of trying to get access to thirty-five. So I guess that's our next stumbling block, but, you know, it's, I guess that's all I've got to say at this point.
I think what Jim and Joe said basically reflects what I have to say. I'm not comfortable with that, with that intersection at this point, and until we explore our other possibilities with, with DOT, I'm not ready to support this any further.
Well, I think from the beginning, we've all known that we've got a, you know, a chunk of property here that's going to have a commercial piece of, of improvement on it, you know, whether it's a grocery store or something else, it can happen because it's, because it's been a commercial piece of property. Certainly a large number of residents would love to see a grocery store in there. Certainly wouldn't object to that. But in terms of deciding whether this should be a grocery store, or whether it should be an apartment building, or whatever that should be, certainly seems more, certainly seems to be an awful lot easier decision-making process if you've got someone that says, okay, if you do X with it, then here's what a traffic study would, would indicate would be some consequences, and what you'd have to do. So I think most of us are working up, are pretty much coming to the conclusion that in order for us to proceed to approval or denial, we at least want to take a look at the question of what's going to happen to the traffic patterns in and around us. And if we come back with, you know, just, just do a scenario that says absolutely nothing's going to change, then we're going to be dealt with, okay, that's, that's the worst-case scenario, which, and I, and I give Dean high marks. He's certainly has tried to respond to the various and sundry concerns raised by the residents, no question about that, and residents have been very patient with us. But I would certainly agree that it seems like we need to just get that additional piece of information to throw it into the mix of the decision-making. So, having said that, we need a motion of one sort or another.
Can I make one comment before? The, the traffic study, I understand. The, the ultimate issue to the board, as I see it, is the, it's the worst-case scenario, you're going to accept what is here. If that is what you are stating, then there should be a vote to approve what is going on, so there is a reason for a developer to pay for a traffic study. If you are going to say, go spend another ten thousand bucks, and then we'll decide whether or not we want to move further with this, is probably not going to work.
Is that what your estimation is of the cost of a TIA? Ten thousand dollars?
Yes.
I believe the notes said that the TIA could cost up to ten thousand dollars. Kevin? Can you clarify anything on that?
That's under worst-case scenario. Based on this particular scale, we were thinking around five to six.
Five to six, maybe, ten, worst case. Dean, in response to your premise, okay? Say, worst-case scenario is the board would approve this, okay? I don't know that that's, I don't want to make that assumption on behalf of the other board members without this missing piece of information. It would certainly make it a lot easier to say, okay, well, if we can't do that, could we do this? The other thing that got thrown into this mix tonight, and, and it was a new piece of information, as I was plowing through the. as I was plowing through the data last night, was this notion, which even the representative from the DOT said, that's an interesting possibility, the idea of somehow giving 20 feet or some of this right-of-way to the village in some kind of capacity, which would then allow the building to be moved even further away from the residence. I mean, that's not an insignificant piece of information to deal with, number one. Secondly, it changes the whole layout of the property.
My opinion as the developer and the money man here would be, you get that piece of land and that 20 feet, and then we do the next thing.
Yeah.
When you do get the 20 feet to present to me, then I go back through engineering and layout, and another $10,000 to move the building 20 feet. The amount of money that's been spent so far in almost years' approach of this project is phenomenal. And it comes down to, is it going to happen or not going to happen? If you want this to happen, you must make motions in such a manner that when we accomplish certain things, more things happen.
Where's Solomon when you need him?
Would you be comfortable, how many of the board members would be comfortable with this proposal, and if this is where we end up, streetwise?
I think that's what Dean is saying.
I'm just asking you.
Yeah. I'm saying I can't vote for this plan positively, in a positive, I can't raise my hand and say I approve it. I can't say that. I would not approve this plan tonight. I would cast a no vote. Did that help?
Mm-hmm. Pauline?
Well, I don't know if I could make the decision. I'd want to base my decision on whether or not we can get the access off 35 before saying, if that doesn't work, then this. I would like that piece of information before saying whether or not this works.
But what if you don't get that information? If you can't get that information?
I think we need to get it.
We've already been told there is no access off 35.
We haven't made the request.
Three times what the DOT is going to allow. As much as we want to have this access, we're going to have to do it in some other legal manner, probably, in my little comment earlier, maybe the only way it happens. Other than that, we are probably with this plan, whether the plan gets bigger or smaller, but it's here, and it's probably this plan with this access.
I did not get that impression from the three readings that we got from Joe. What I heard was, present us with a formal request. That's what I, now, those aren't the exact words that Joe read, but that's what, after they rattled around for a while, that's what I heard. And that's why I say I'm willing to do, to work with anyone, I'm thinking of our attorney, and you, and Joe, who is an engineer, by the way. He said he's not, but I know he is, to see if we can come up with the appropriate wording to...
And the village paid for the study, and if the study comes out negative, I will, and the village approves this plan because it couldn't do it, I will reimburse the village the cost of the study. But I get this plan approved, then. If the study doesn't allow any other access, you understand what I'm saying? You want to go ahead and do the study, the DOT asks for the village to do the study, not for the developer, if you read the letter. If the village wants to do this study and can get me an access off Highway 35, I will reimburse the village for the study. But to not give approval of this plan based upon the study, and whatever the answer is of the study, we either access here, or we access off Highway 35, wherever, at the present time, you're telling me, spend $10,000 more dollars, and if we don't get the answers we want, we're not approving the plan. I don't know any nicer way to say it.
Not necessarily, but it's possible. Possible.
If this is data that's going to happen for the whole village, and all your streets, and all your highways, and all your entrances and exits, and, you know, there's something that happened on this lot eventually, anyway, information that DOT wants.
That's condition number 11 on the recommended motion. TIA, but it would take care of by the developer. Without the recommendation to approve...
It's also in context of everything else. The board can take the plan commission's recommendation, or it can modify it, add to it, make it more restrictive. We have a couple of options. Certainly, one is, we can make a motion to table the issue at hand, pending completion of a study paid for by the developer, would be in the motion. We have a motion where it's laid out as Dean said, which is where the village would pay for it upfront, to the extent that we then subsequently approve the plan, he then pays for that, reimburses us for that cost. Or if you're not ready to make either one of those two decisions, and obviously, one would be to say, no, we're not going to do that tonight, or yes, we are going to do as the plan commission has recommended, or we can just simply table the issue, if we're just not ready to make a decision tonight.
And then we'll go through this whole thing again. I'm not ready to do that.
I don't like the last one, because the last one doesn't get us anywhere other than carry over to next month. And at the end of the day, we need information. That's what we're looking for, to see what it's going to be.
I think fundamentally, it runs down to who's going to pay for the information. We all believe that we need to get more information, I think, and just who's going to pay for it. Dean says he doesn't want to unless it's going to have a positive outcome. So we pony up $5,000 or $6,000, thereabouts, to get this thing working. I also think we may have some legal costs involved because of the importance of this right-of-way and wording of, you know, our reasons and why we need that other access. So I have a hunch that we're going to spend 10 grand. We're going to spend 10 grand before we spend 6. And I don't blame Dean from saying, you know, I've got a lot of money tied up in this thing, and I'd like to get, you know, this thing off the dime. I would not be opposed to the village picking up those costs just to keep things moving. So I'd be glad to make that motion that we, the village, approve an expenditure of up to $10,000, just to get this thing off the dime tonight, okay? I would make a motion that the village approve up to $10,000 to do a TIA, traffic information analysis, is that it?
Impact.
Impact.
Impact analysis, thank you, for this property in North Hudson, with the specific included with the TIA has to be some requests to the DOT for access to 35 and/or use of that right-of-way that exists along the east side of this property to allow us to have other access into and/or out of this grocery store. And I know that's a long-involved motion, and I apologize for that, but that is essentially where I'm coming from. So we can reword that any way you want, but fundamentally, I think we can go ahead and spend the 10 grand. I wouldn't be opposed to doing that.
Then would it be also a part of your motion that, to the extent that it results in a favorable outcome for this particular developer, that that cost would be reimbursed?
Yes, that should be part of it, because that should be part of these meeting minutes. That's verbally been agreed upon.
What portion or what part of that would be reimbursed? Just the TIA study, or?
Well, that's all we're asking for.
Well, we got some legal costs.
If we have legal costs in there. In the letter that will be composed...
My guess is we should have Dean pick up the engineering costs, we'll pick up the legal costs. That seems to be fair.
Well, second, it's so we can discuss, okay? Why does it die because of the lack of a second?
Well, this information, from my perspective, is valuable regardless of what kind of property is going to go on there. Eventually, we're going to need this information.
Yeah, I think, but then I think that the TIA has to say, this is going to be a grocery store, and this is how much traffic is going to be generated.
No, I agree with that. I agree with that.
But the base, you know, where we are now, sure, that has to be part of it.
As the north end of the table knew this.
Any other comments on this?
I'm assuming, if I have this right, that if this goes through, and we were to get an access to this property, Dean's engineers would re-engineer the parking lot and runoff, take care of all the necessary things, in addition to paying back the $10,000, and that we would proceed on with this plan. Is that what I'm hearing?
Now, wait, is the repayment contingent on the 35 access, or the ultimate approval of any plan in his favor?
I think it's approval of any plan.
That was my understanding.
Was that yours? It's approval of the plan.
Is continuation of business in the area.
I think we need to be very clear on that, for Dean's sake, for our sake, for residents' sake.
Larry, can you talk a little bit more about how this, how the TIA would be useful in the future to the village in planning? That's something that intrigues me.
I'm just thinking of it as a generic. This particular proposed business would have a certain volume of traffic. Put almost any other kind of commercial or quasi-residential facility in there, and it's going to have some amount of projected traffic with it. That study would at least give the village information to work with in the future, of just a generic value. No more complicated than that. But clearly, the intent of the motion is reimbursement is contingent on approval of this proposed project. That's understood? Okay. Any other? Now, we haven't dealt with the issue of the plan commission's recommendation to us, formally, okay?
We should rule on this motion first, and then...
Well, there is no motion. I mean, the plan commission, I'm just trying to think in terms of keeping this in order.
No, his motion would be appropriate this time.
Pardon? Which one?
His.
Okay. All right. I was just trying to get the sequence of the motions in order. Okay. And Bill confirmed that this would be the appropriate order. All right. Are there any other comments, anything else to make on the motion that's on the table? Okay? All in favor of the motion?
Nope, suspending.
Suspending issues, so we'll have to do a roll call. And we'll start down here. If you're in favor, say yes.
Do you have to start down here? Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Larry, yes?
Yes.
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 Okay, 6-0. Now, with respect to the issue of the plan commission's recommendation, I would make a motion that that issue be tabled.
Until...
I guess until we feel it's time to bring it off the table. Does that have a date?
No.
No, it doesn't. It's just tabled.
Wouldn't make sense, but that we get the results of this TIA and DOT response before we...
You could tie it to that, you could also pull it off the table at any time, or you can just say, until we get that, we're not going to bring it up.
Okay, yeah, that's probably the easiest. Somebody wants to bring it up again, then we could...
Well, I have a motion just to table it. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Questions, comments?
We are going, although we're going to table it, there were a couple of things that I just wonder if the plan commission could address, and perhaps some clarification for the future when it does come up. Would that be appropriate at this time, Larry, or should we?
No, I don't think so.
Okay.
You mean in terms of, for future proceedings?
When it comes up again.
Okay. We can deal with that separate.
Okay.
Motion to table it, does not require a roll call, does it? All right, all in favor of the motion to table the plan commission recommendation, sign it by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carried. All right, moving on to item number two. There's a multifamily apartment building conversion to condominium units, Fifth Street North. That was presented to the board primarily for review, my understanding, does not require action by the board. It is simply, it is primarily a change in the...
Change in the condition of use permit.
Change in the wording on the condition of use permit, all it literally is. Okay.
Can you hang on just a second, Larry, so we can get back to...
There.
I just had a couple of comments to make on this packet here. And I see Brian's here, and as I looked over this epistle, one of the things I didn't see on here was any mention of taxes and collecting taxes. And I had an opportunity to talk to our tax assessor about this particular issue, and he said that had we passed this last year, it would have made things a whole lot easier for him and for the county. But what happens is, because we're going to approve this now, in '08, and what that means is that the county has to deal with this situation, and that he then has to divide up the assessment. I just want to say that it's going, this is complicating the tax collection for these condos. Do you have any comment on that, Brian?
It's an assessor's call on how he wants to do it, and how it's broken up. If there's a common area, he can make another parcel, taxable parcel.
Yeah, that's...
He can. He doesn't have to. He can leave that one blank and just... He can leave that one blank and just put the value on each individual units that you own yourself, and just increase that value. If there's four units, divide that common value by four and add one-fourth to each of the individual units, so there's less tax parcels, but the same amount of value.
Right, okay.
That's what he said. I have a building such as this. We have six condo units plus the common area, and we get six tax bills, not seven.
That's fine. I just want to make sure that the village does make sure it collects the taxes from this property as it had in the past when they were apartments. It may be taxed differently, but.
They will be taxed differently.
Very.
And you'll get, you'll get, you'll get four.
Five.
Or five parcels without one. That's.
Okay.
I mean, that was my assumption. That was the only real change here. The apartment now becomes a house, so to speak.
Right, right. And at least there, unless there be any question about whether or not I read all this stuff, on page nine, there's an error. But you know, you knew I would find it, right? I'm convinced that sometimes people write these and leave a word out just to see if I'm going to catch it.
We've got a pool.
But it's in, it's in their bylaws?
Yeah. Oh, so we're not, so this isn't anything that governs us?
No.
Oh, geez, I read it for nothing.
Don't stop there.
No, I, no, I read it to make sure that there was no municipal inclusions or exclusions in there.
Oh, okay.
Might as well tell us which one it is.
I knew you'd ask. Page nine, thirteen point one. Read it. You tell me what word they left off.
All right, I'm going to move on to the next.
They left off the word "end." It's an open-ended sentence. It says fiscal year. The fiscal year of the association shall begin on the first day of January and end on the last day of December of each year.
I would have missed that.
I know you would. That's why I'm here.
Moving on to item number seven on the agenda.
Wait a minute. Isn't that what Brian was here for? That, that one little thing?
No, he was here for the other public work also.
Nor is any action required. It's an informational issue only.
Yeah, okay.
On the ordinance amending section sixty-two point three scheduled fees, deposits, and penalties approval requested. On that issue, when that was originally put on the agenda, we would have requested that this board approve changes in that schedule that's in the three-ring binder slash village ordinance book. Gloria has identified a methodology whereby in the future, you make reference to, to that so that every time we change that, which we do, not infrequently, that changes once or twice a year. And you'll literally have to go through the expense of having the whole codebook, you know, reprinted. There's a way to avoid that that many municipalities are using. She's identified that. So what she would like to do is just not take action on this to just, this recalls approval requested. I would make a motion to table action on item number seven until, you know, a subsequent meeting, at which point in time this issue will be changed in terms of what the motion is going to look like, if that makes sense.
You want to table it, right? I move we table item number seven.
Second.
Did you want to say something to that?
Well, by table, it, it's actually an ordinance request, and we won't be doing that. So if we could just remove that permanently, because the, the request that would come through would be totally different. It would be to rescind our, we couldn't send our ordinance work. And so it really isn't changing the fee schedule.
So what, what motion, we have a motion to table. Would you rather see the motion do something else?
Go away. And we, we.
Did you say you want me to go away?
We won't be addressing it in the future either.
Oh, you want to rescind this item?
Bill?
Well, I think, I think laying on the table is effectively the same thing as rescinding it. You just never call it back.
Table it?
Yeah.
Okay, I think you're right. So we have a motion in a second to table, which means we're going to let it die a natural death. All in favor of that motion, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Anyone else, leave the room. Thank you. Plan Commission recommend, any chair updates? Anything new in Plan Commission?
Just don't send it back to plan.
I don't think that's in the cards. All right. Just in the interest of time, I'll move on to finance. Finance committee is recommending approval of the get to that section real quick.
I can make a motion here.
Go ahead.
Approve December two thousand and seven non-recurring claims totaling one hundred and eighty-eight thousand, four hundred and sixty-two dollars and thirty-five cents.
Second.
Any questions on the? Okay, I'll do a quick roll call vote. Sandra?
Yes.
Larry, yes. George?
Yes.
Alene?
Yes.
I move we approve the January two thousand and eight non-recurring claims totaling eleven thousand, eight hundred and fifteen dollars and seven cents.
I'll second it. Any questions on the January claims? Now, we'll start on this end of table. In favor, signify by saying yes. Joe?
Yes.
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 Larry, yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, okay. Two thousand year-end update, just because of the number of things that have been going on, including the movement into the new facility, whatnot, we don't really have any updates unless you wanted to share something else. At great length, if you are, you're limited to twenty-five minutes.
No, thank you.
Twenty-five seconds.
Public Works.
Okay, three or four things. Hopefully, we can get through them very quickly. The first thing is we've been working on our on-call policy, which is for our Public Works employees to be, because we kind of have to keep the business and things operating on weekends and holidays. So we have people that are on-call, and we looked at what some other municipalities around here were doing. The other thing, as you know, is we've, we've hired Brian Fry as a part-time employee to fill in on the weekends, so our employees do not have to be here, whatever it has been, about two weekends out of the month. It's now about one weekend out of the month, which is not as good as I'd like to see, but it's at least a step in the right direction. So what we have is, you'll see, and I, what I will ask for is approval for a, the, the change in the Public Works weekend and on, weekend and holidays on-call policies that's dated January fifteenth, two thousand and eight. It should be in the packet in front of you. Essentially, the people that are full-time hourly personnel get two hours of overtime pay. Yeah, and if they're called in, they get a minimum of two hours minimum pay. On, for Brian, who is part-time, he would get fifty dollars a day when he's on-call. And if he's called in, it's a two-hour minimum at fourteen dollars an hour. And then Mark Ekblad gets two and a half hours of compensatory time when he's on-call and two hours of compensatory time minimum when he gets called in. This will, I, I think it revises the policy a little bit. We are still, I think, in line with other communities, and that's what my recommendation is, is to approve this Public Works Weekend and Holidays On-Call Policy Changes dated January fifteenth, two thousand and eight.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Joe, what would happen if somebody got six calls in a weekend, say?
Well, six calls over, over, you know, forty-eight, you know, depends on how long they're out.
So they would basically get twelve hours.
They could get twelve hours.
Okay, just had to know that. I know it's probably not typical, but seems fine to me.
Not likely.
You got six, you'd probably have overlapping. You'd be doing one thing, get, get another phone call, in which case you don't automatically crank up again.
Yeah, well, that's what I was wondering.
Yeah, well, if that happens.
Say that they got four right down the same road, would they be able to bill us four times, or would we?
Yeah, they bill us four times. I was just thinking, if somebody calls us six times, I'm going to come looking for you because I think you're harassing again.
Sounds good.
Okay, it's a spending issue, so we've got a motion in a second to change the weekend and holiday on-call policy. So all in favor, we'll start on this end. Sandra?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Larry, yes?
Yes.
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 Okay, unanimous.
The second thing that we, let's see, do we need to approve this or just inform them? This next thing with the training. It's just information, isn't it? Yeah. Just so you know, our people are trained, and it's not only Public Works people, it's the entire village staff on safety issues. Our training expense has actually gone down a little bit because we used to have this, what do they call this?
Combined space entry.
Combined space entry. I can never think of that. We no longer do that, so our training exercises are a little bit easier, so the cost of doing that this year is going to go down. We piggyback on what happens with North, with Hudson. They, they bring in their own trainer, and then we pay them as, depending on how many employees that goes, go to that. And so we're allocating twenty-five hundred. We've actually budgeted, I think, three thousand for it this year, but are, but they're asking for us to pay them twenty-five hundred dollars, and that's what you see in your packet. That's what we will do. We don't need to vote on it or have a motion. It's just information only. Is that okay? The next item that I had was February meeting date change. I think next two weeks from today is what goes on here.
Primary election.
Primary election. So can we meet the next day, or is this, can we meet on Wednesday? Gloria, do you know what would be acceptable day for us to meet?
I, by then, everything would be cleaned up, so that's.
Is Wednesday at six o'clock okay with you? Sandra?
Plan Commission's meeting at seven. Just FYI. However, however.
You now have.
However, you've got a conference room right here that I think we're going to adjourn into in just a little while, and so you guys could meet in there.
Perfect. We can have two meetings going on here.
So is Plan Commission.
Do they have to be?
No. Public Safety's never televised.
Yeah, but I think, isn't there a reason Public Works is?
Why would Public Works over-safety?
Is it normally televised?
Yeah. Sorry for delaying answering a yes or no question.
But it doesn't have to be.
Well, you know, why don't, Sandra, why don't I talk to Gloria? We'll figure out a.
You got two cameras?
I'll talk to you.
You got two cameras?
Can you record two meetings at the same time? I doubt it.
We'll just have a quick meeting.
Public Works and Public Safety.
No.
Plan.
Plan.
There you go.
Joe, I can do the twentieth, but not the twenty-first. So if it, if it works on the twentieth, then I'm in.
Okay, the fourteenth. So the twentieth, let's, let's meet the twentieth.
Anybody on Public Works who's also on plan? No, okay. Just wanted to ask so you can.
Okay, the last item that I just wanted to make as, as a, as a chairperson is not on here, but we have, and, and I don't want to discuss it because it's not on the agenda. What I want to do is alert you that Public Works has been assigned the responsibility to, what are we going to do with that lot across the street project? And we do have some money set aside for that, I think, for, for cleaning it up and rehabilitating the site and that sort of thing. I've talked to a number of people on the board privately, as well as some of the staff, mainly the staff. And it looks like what I think we should do is provide some off-street parking over there for, it seems to me we could probably put ten places there, ten slots right on the north side. That takes, the, the property measures about twenty-five by two-hundred feet. So we would take up sixty to seventy feet of the first two-hundred feet of the north-south, if you will. The remaining part, what I'm saying is we should asphalt that and stripe it and turn it into parking. Then the remaining part of it, we would just put some black dirt on and put some grass on for the, for the near term. And then I would say turn it back over to the park board to see what they would like to do with it. My point in doing this, so we don't have reoccurring things that are tabled and taking back to either my committee or your committee, is the next time we meet, the Public Works will probably have a proposal to do just that. If you guys have any ideas on what to do about it, do some thinking between now and then. And you may offer your opinions prior to the meeting of Public Works on the twentieth, but we will put it on the agenda and talk about it. Hopefully, we'll bring it up on the board so we can vote on it and get that thing kind of cleaned up this year, is what we would like to do.
All right.
End of story.
So you're looking for input from anybody, including residents?
Yes, absolutely.
I had a resident talk to me, and the recommendation was exactly what you just said. Why don't you make a half-parking lot, half-grass?
I'm going to suggest, I'm going to just suggest we move on. Just since that is not a agenda item.
Thank you.
Public Safety Committee?
In the interest of time, you got the minutes from our last meeting. You also see the chief's report. It's very brief. If you have any questions, feel free to ask. Otherwise, I'll just move on to Village Hall additional remodel plan update. Take a look. You're seeing the most recent update yet to do in here. The folks from Hudson, North Hudson Cable Access are working on it. You can see the cameras. There's a couple of cameras up here. They're not hooked up yet, but they've been working diligently on that. If you look behind this dais, you'll see that there's quite a spaghetti factory back there. Eventually, what you will have is tables that'll be very similar in design to this. They'll be much more updated than these. There'll be a modesty panel in front. You're sitting on our new chairs. We're going to adjourn into the back room, and you'll see that we'll be using the chief's table. I say the chief's table because it's the one that was downstairs in his office. And we'll be using that in the conference room. We're pretty excited about the way that's turned out. Just a little note about this room. You may recall that it had what looked like baseboard heat all around. It wasn't baseboard heat. It was, and you can see the holes in the floor now. It was simply registered, we're, we're going to put in, I believe the count is fourteen registers around this room and the conference room, plus the one return register that's in the wall. I was hoping that those would have been delivered today, or in time for tonight, but they weren't. So what I'm saying to you is that we are down to the end. We're really close to being, to wrapping it up. Oh, the other thing I want to mention, BMG is the company. You approved them a month or last, or in the month of December. If you look in the ceiling, you'll see that there are two outlets in the ceiling, and they correspond to where the monitor will be. And up here, there will be a projector hanging from the ceiling, shining on the wall out here, where there will be the screen. Our old screen will work just fine. Also, along that wall, we've already commissioned a gentleman who lives here in the village, in fact, doesn't he? And he's, he's building us seven voting booths, and we expect that they will be in in time for the February nineteenth primary election. We think we're getting a very good price on a ver, on an excellent voting booth. In fact, he has a patent on it, doesn't he? It is patented, and so they'll be along that wall. And while I'm talking about the voting booths, you'll notice we still do have the handicap booth that will be placed over against the wall over here. We will have seven booths. If we need more, we are retaining, we're not getting rid of the old ones, and we'll be able to set them up on a wall on a as-needs basis. So we're in real good shape regarding that. Any questions?
No, place looks great.
I have a comment, George. Driving down the highway the other day, and I look over and I see Village of North Hudson.
How about that?
You can actually find it from the highway now easily. And it looks nice.
It does, yeah, thank you.
With the lights shining on it.
A little source of pride for us.
The, and just another little piece, it's, it's my hope that we'll be able to get at least the state flag hanging up there next to the American flag. And I found out that, and are you involved at all with the American flag that we're going to get back? It's going, we're getting an American flag that will have flown in Iraq. And so that, that's kind of special. But with the floodlights out there, we can leave the flags up all night. And it, like you said.
Oh.
Those lights, you know where you're in, you know you're in the village.
And it says Village of North Hudson.
That's it.
Not North Hudson.
Not North Hudson.
Good report. Thank you. Public Welfare.
I'll keep this brief. First of all, George, nice job. This is really beautiful. Nate Scoog recommended something tonight being his eye that he's got for what looks good in camera. Said, once we finally get a logo to just project it up here and have like an artist to sketch it out or do something behind the wall, take it or leave it, but I thought, oh, so that breaks up a neat wall.
Are we asking for logos?
Along those lines, now, my other dream is that the other, the third flag up there will be the village flag. And I hope that down the road, we can maybe throw it out as a little contest to see who could design the North Hudson logo that would be on our flag and on the wall. That would, that's great.
We've got some creative people around, so.
We do, and I'm looking at one of them.
Okay, Public Welfare. Very briefly, the only thing that really needs attention is the adoption of ordinance oh-two dash two zero zero eight to allow anybody who is handling dogs that aid impaired persons to be able to do it without being charged for license for lack of a more lengthy term. And do we need to?
The clerk, the clarification there is that it is already in state law. We just need to codify it into our village.
It, it actually, the village ordinance says that by reference, we follow the state law and it says between this section and this section, but it doesn't call it out. And so if you're looking for a fee, it doesn't address it. And so this would put it into our ordinance. So if it is real clear, five years from now, somebody won't be researching the same thing.
Beautiful. Well, what would be the motion?
It's on that issue's table.
Okay, so I will make the motion that we move to adopt ordinance number zero-two dash two zero zero eight amending the Village of North Hudson's municipal codebook, section ten dash eleven, animals exemptions, and section sixty-two dash three, schedule of fees, deposits, and penalties to include language exempting service dogs trained to provide support for the mobily impaired from the dog license fee.
And I'll second that.
Does that include people who are training dogs to be these helper dogs?
That was the intention.
Want to make sure that that's, okay.
I think George is questioning, do they include people who are training the dogs or people who have one?
Training the dogs.
Yeah, this is what it's directed to do.
All right, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Okay, anything else?
Two things real briefly. I'm stirring a waste management pot again, but I'm not going to deal with it until I get back from vacation. Thirdly, if you need any XM voice messages to the community, I'll give you my cell phone. I can do it from anywhere in the country. But try to keep them short and limited because it is a vacation.
Try to find me?
Yeah, yeah. Gloria can track me down. Lastly, I would.
Just for the record, what is your cell phone number?
Would you like to broadcast?
And lastly, since I will not be president, present, will not be president, that's for sure. Since I will not be present and we don't have anything of any critical magnitude, we are going to cancel the Public Welfare meeting scheduled for, hold on here, um, February. Let me get the right date here. Whatever it is, the February one.
Twenty-first.
February twenty-first. So if you could make sure that everybody who's not here that really cares knows about it, that would be great. That's all I have.
Thank you. Park Board.
We didn't meet last month, so I have nothing to say.
Okay. And you've got, we've got the two thousand and eight.
It was tabled last time. Would that mean that you could leave that table?
Okay. Joe? New business, websites, status?
Um, I'm, I've gotten notice that they've processed our payment. They're ready to give me an hour of training, get me started and set up a meeting with their graphic designer. To which I would like to ask if anyone has photos that represent the village, things that might be of interest that we could use in our graphic design, that they'd let me know. Otherwise, we'll probably take some. I have some because I've had this planned for a while, but also I'm planning, I've done some initial talking to department heads on what their expectations and desires for the site are and we'll move on with that as it comes along.
Super. Well, again, thank you very much for taking that one on. We appreciate it. Uh, just in the interest of time, I'll skip any comments I would have otherwise had. It looks like you've got a couple of.
Uh, just briefly, the April board meeting because April first also is the general spring election and the first Tuesday of the month, we need to schedule a meeting for the end of the month. A date in there.
We all have a March calendar in the back of our books. You want to do it, uh, March twenty-fifth, Tuesday, March twenty-fifth, which would be a week early?
We usually do.
Okay.
April Board meeting. Larry, did you want to, or, or Gloria, did you want to comment on this document that we heard here?
Finance and Board.
Finance and Board, I'm sorry.
Oh, I thought you were finishing.
And then, uh, just quickly, uh, presidential and the town judge range for primary, February nineteenth, come out and vote.
If, if you're not in town, can you get an absentee ballot?
Certainly.
And how do I go about doing that?
Come into our office. Um, we'll process an absentee application. You'll fill one of those out. Label for you and a ballot and you can actually not, you can actually that, vote right there because we do have the ballots now. We wouldn't have to mail them to you.
Would, uh, do you need anything more official and, uh, go ahead, get it all ready and for Jan and I and we'll just stop by or show you?
It doesn't take that long.
Okay.
If you're already registered to vote, you'll be in and out here in no time.
Perfect. Thank you.
Okay. Uh, Chair, would you entertain a motion to convene in the closed session?
I'll move.
Is there a second?
We can go in the conference room?
That requires a roll call vote.
Yes.
Yes.
George?
Yep.